If you're talking, I can't hear. Are you mad, Madam Mayor?
No, I was, it was Vice Mayor Yassu, he was having some technical difficulties, so I was trying to help him with that. All right, we will call the meeting to order, I'm just trying to make sure we have enough council members to do quorum. See, I see Councilman Carroll, Councilman Johnson. See, Councilman Perkins. Councilman Carroll and Councilman Johnson, can you just make sure and text them the call information for tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone, we will start shortly. I just want to make sure we have quorum before we start the meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, I see Councilman Perkins. Okay, Mr. Hadlock, that's no problem, we got you. So I think we have quorum for this evening. So again, my name is Beverly Burks, and this is the City Council meeting for July. And I am calling this meeting to order, and with that, we will proceed with roll call. Beverly Burks, Councilman Carroll.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson. I know I saw her there.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yassu. Vice Mayor Yassu. Thank you, Mr. Moore, and Ms. Asprey, if you don't mind, can you resend out the link? Some people have the 22nd link instead of the 29th. So if you could make sure everybody has the up-to-date link.
And the link that's on our city website is the correct link. If people just tell others, go to the city internet site and click that link, it's the correct one.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Councilman Hassan. I think he's on yet. Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes.
And Councilman Perkins. Councilman Mark Perkins. I see, Mark.
I'm, I'm here, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
All the audio.
Thank you, no problem, and I see Vice Mayor Yassu present. So right now, we just need to make sure Councilman Hassan is, has at least the correct information. So we'll go ahead and proceed with the Pledge of Allegiance. So everybody, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll proceed with the agenda. With any updates to it. Councilman Perkins.
I was adjusting my glasses, but I'm happy to, to make a motion that we add an executive session to our agenda tonight. To discuss a legal matter.
Thank you, is it a second?
A second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we add an agenda item to have executive session to discuss a legal matter. Is there any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the addition to the agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passed, and we will add that to the end of the agenda. With that being said, we will move into the administrative business and presentations where we have the approval of the minutes from the council meeting of 6:1, 2021. The call, special call at 6:22, 21, 10 p.m., 10 a.m. And the call, the special call work session, 6:22, 21, at 6:30 p.m. And so, Council, I will entertain a motion for the minutes, if there aren't any corrections or changes.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes from the, for the council meeting on 6:1, 2021. The special call meeting on 6:22, 21, 10 a.m. And special call work session, 6:22, 21, at 6:30 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we approve the minutes for council meeting, 6:1, 2021. Call, special call, 6:22, 21, 10 a.m. Special call work session, 6:22, 21, 6:30 p.m. Are you ready for the question? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion passed. We will now proceed in with our reports, and we will have our first report from Planning and Zoning, Ms. Cowie.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, I'm Shawana Cowie, the Planning Economic Development Director, and here are a few highlights from the Planning Economic Development Department. The Comprehensive Plan, the Clarkston 2040 update, is underway. We need your feedback and your participation, and your participation to help facilitate the vision and the long-range goals for the city. Your input, residents, businesses, businesses, business owners and patrons, your input is needed to shape the vision for the city of Clarkston, as well as when and where future developments should take place in the city of Clarkston. Please visit the Comprehensive Plan website at publicinput.com/clarstonupdate2021. Also, the zoning rewrite needs your feedback as well and participation. So continue gathering your ideas, your suggestions and recommendations on creating a more user-friendly zoning ordinance for the city. Your input assists on creating, amending and rewriting the zoning ordinance plan for the various land uses you would like to see in the city of Clarkston. Please, as well, your input is very important, so join us at one of the community open houses at the Clarkston Women's Club, July the 13th, 9 a.m. to 1 p.m., or on July the 14th, from 5 p.m. to 7 p.m. Visit our website to register and also to sign up if you need translation services at planning@pond.com/clarston-zoning-ordinance-rewrite. Good news, the Sarn Senior Community Center is ready for residents. The 128-unit facility is ready to serve the community. If you are interested or know someone who may be interested, please call 678-510-2160, or email them at sarn@thehdc.org. They will be happy to hear from you. And that is my report, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cowie, are there any questions for Ms. Cowie at this time? Hearing none, thank you, Ms. Cowie, we will now have the City Manager's report, Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor, this is Robin Gomez, the Clarkston City Manager, good evening to everyone on this meeting. As a first update, we received our most recent SPOST, or the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, the additional 1% sales tax. And again, we receive our distribution every month. The most recent for the activity for the month of May was our second highest collection, our second highest distribution received. Since the onset of the tax, we received $178,438.22. So again, very, very positive economic numbers for retail sales and other goods that folks are purchasing subject to the sales tax. We continue to see an increase in our, our distribution as well as the rest of the state of Georgia. So again, some, at least some positive economic indicators after the, as we proceed down, hopefully reaching the, near the, nearing the end of the pandemic. So we are, for the most recent 12 months, we're about 11% above the prior 12 months. So again, just a continued positive number. We will, I will, we will email to the council, the, our financial report through the month of June. Tomorrow is the last day of June, so we haven't concluded and closed out the month. But we will email that to you by Tuesday at the latest. We will be closed for the 4th of July holiday on Monday, July the 5th. That's when the, of course, 4th of July being Sunday, the holiday observance is on Monday. Excuse me, trash and recycling collections, however, will occur on Monday. That is the waste management, the green or black large barrel, for single-family and small commercial. Those collections, that collection will occur on Monday, July the 5th, as well as the recycling collection, the blue 18-gallon containers, those will occur on Monday. Anyone with larger debris or other household items, the city will collect those on Tuesday, July the 6th. So again, regular trash recycling, any other larger items will occur on Tuesday. Our city construction projects, we pretty much have reached the conclusion of the streetscape with very minor details left. So that, again, the project that saw improvements on Norman Road from Mylon Park down to Church Street, on a part of Roland between Norman Road and Market Street, Market Street from Roland up to North Indian Creek, and then East Ponce de Leon from Market Street to essentially I-285. Again, that project is essentially 100% complete. We will be holding, hopefully the weather holds up, a, a celebration in, to celebrate the completion of that project with a, the decorative street lighting, turning on the lights, so having a countdown of the lights followed by fireworks. We will have some entertainment, food trucks and other food vendors that will take place on Market Street between Vaughn and East Ponce, and likely utilizing part of Refuge Coffee's location as well. And then the fireworks will be launched after we have the street lighting and other recognition will likely be around 9:15 to 9:30. In the evening, we're planning for the event to be from 7 until 10 p.m. Again, on Friday, July the 23rd, we will release more information as we approach the date, but encourage everyone to come out. And for all of you who live nearby, walk out here to our city center, enjoy the food vendors, some of the entertainment, and then we'll have the decorative street lighting, followed by fireworks to celebrate all of that, the completion of our construction. Hopefully, many of our, quite a few of our residents, because we're approaching over 3,000, our city pool that opened on June the 5th, and it remains open daily, well, Monday to Thursday from 11 to 6, Friday, Saturdays, from, excuse me, Monday to Thursdays from 11 a.m. to 7 p.m., Fridays and Saturdays from 11 a.m. to 6 p.m., and Sundays from 12 noon to 6 p.m. So please come out and enjoy the pool. We do have a capacity of 100 at the pool, so we are limiting attendees to two hours, especially when it gets fairly crowded, mainly Fridays through Sundays. But it is just the $2 to enter for all ages 3 and older. And again, the pool will remain open daily through Sunday, August the 1st. And then the rest of August up through Labor Day will be open on the weekends, including Labor Day, Monday, September the 6th. They'll be open from 11 to 6 on Saturdays and 12 to 6 on Sundays. Also, at Mylon Park, we are, we will be taking reservations or scheduling for the usage of the pavilions beginning Monday, July the 18th. So anybody looking to reserve the pavilions, they will no longer be first come, first served beginning Monday, July the 18th. So they can call here to City Hall, or call my cell number to get, make those reservations. And again, my number is 678-409-9683. And as, I wanted, I'm sorry, I missed the reporting on our construction. As we complete the streetscape, we have begun other, we still have other projects, and the main one on Roland Street continues from Market Street all the way down to the redo of the Pocket Park right before you reach Mel Avenue and the U-Haul down the path. That continues with curbing sidewalk and other stonework and street work. And so, there are contractors moving along with that, and even some of the aprons on the driveways have been completed. We've been meeting with residents to clarify any questions and any other concerns that they may have, so that all goes as well as it can. So thank you to all of those residents along Roland and the side streets, including North Indian Creek and Jolly and Wagoner and Lovejoy for their patience and understanding as we look to complete this project as quickly as possible. Then it'll continue on to Hill Street Rogers, and just to add more sidewalks, redo the streets or re-mill and re-asphalt. And then later this year, we'll begin the sidewalk project along Market Street, but we are planning to have a public meeting for, and then, well, specifically for all the residents along Market Street, but anyone else is welcome to attend as well. That meeting will be held July the 13th, beginning at 7 p.m., beginning here at City Hall Annex. And we'll have lots of information, and everyone will be able to ask questions and then walk the actual site. So July the 13th, beginning at 7 p.m. And finally, just a reminder for everyone, please continue, we continue to promote and encourage folks to receive their COVID vaccine if they haven't already. There's significant progress that's been happening, but still not enough so we can return to the new way of life after the pandemic that we know will likely never go away, but certainly be reduced to almost not existing. So please continue to encourage folks to do that. Anybody can come every Friday here at the Clarkston First Baptist Church on Church Street. Core offers the vaccinations at that location every Friday. There are also other locations throughout the county and other medical providers and clinics here in Clarkston, including the Clarkston Community Center, Lifeline Primary Care and Ethne Health that are also providing the vaccinations. Be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gomez?
Mr. Gomez, what is the timing in opening the field, the Mylon Field?
It'll open in, on August, just, excuse me, it'll, yeah, in August, we're going to give it one more month for the grass and the seeding, and we need to remove, remove branches that have fallen and also repair the fence. So August 1st, we'll reopen it.
Well, I mean, I guess I would just encourage you to see if it's possible to any earlier. At this point, it will have been closed for almost whole spring and the summer, which is the time when most people use it.
Well, 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 we have to close it for maintenance, this was the time that we chose. Look for a different time next year, but we have to close it for at least three months every year, so that it can be maintained and re, I mean, essentially have, let the grass grow back in.
Any other questions? Hearing done, we will then proceed with the City Attorney, Mr. Quinn.
Steven. Hello, good evening, thank you, good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have a report at this moment, I do have litigation update for you later in our executive session.
Thank you, sir, with that, no questions for our City Attorney. We will now move into Council remarks, Councilman Carroll.
Yes, I attended the World Refugee Day Celebration at Refuge this last Sunday, that was a great event. I appreciate everyone that helped come out to that and helped organize it, make it happen, for music, for different speakers. And I would also like to join City Manager Gomez encouraging everyone to get vaccinated. The latest statistics show that only 28% of DeKalb County has been fully vaccinated, 32% has received at least one dose. Those are very low numbers, lower than the Georgia average, and the Delta variant is substantially more, substantially more contagious than the previous variants of COVID that we've had, while the vaccine still protects us against it. It is, you're much more likely to get that than you were to get the previous version of COVID. And even, and we, even we see in England, their infection rates are much higher, even though they have also been, even though they have some vaccines, people that are unvaccinated, they are much more likely to get the Delta variant. So I would just encourage everyone, if you haven't been vaccinated, to do so, you can walk in to the Clarkston Community Center, you can walk in Aetna, you can walk in at many places without having to make an appointment. So it's ever been more convenient to get a vaccine, I also think it's never been more important to get the vaccine. That's all I have.
Councilman Carroll, Vice Mayor Yassu.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also attended the Juneteenth Celebration, which we celebrated on 26th, I think, last Saturday. And I also attended on the 21st, Freedom Ride Event that was organized in opposition to, to the recent Sweeping Election Integrity Act, or whatever they call it, which is pretty much a freedom of suppression of voter rights. And I want to encourage all our residents to reach out to their elected officials and voice out their concern, because that's one of our basic sacred rights, which is to vote. And I would also speak, we also had World Refugee Day, I did not get a chance to attend, but I want to speak in light of that, about the ongoing crisis in Ethiopia. I'm very concerned about the situation there, and I'll call all sides to, for, to ceasefire and find a political solution. There is no going to be any military solution to this problem. And that way, coming to the table and solve the problem that, in a way, that respects self-determination of people's rights, at the same time, also respect the right of people to democratically elect their representative. There's a fear, threat of Balkanization of the region, just like what happened in Yugoslavia. That could happen also in, in East Africa, and that could lead to a massive refugee crisis. And Clarkston being home to so many refugees, we definitely don't want to see more people being displaced throughout East Africa. And this could spill throughout the entire of East Africa, and we call on the Biden Administration to actually put more pressure to end this crisis that's going on in both Eritrea and Ethiopia. And I condemn the actions of the Eritrean dictatorial government, but of intervening in Ethiopia and all the human rights violations that happened in Eritrea and also in northern part of Ethiopia. And that's all I want to report on, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Yassu, Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I had the pleasure of trying to coordinate a Juneteenth event on June 19th. And the rain kind of stopped us from doing that, so we did have a rescheduled event on June 26th. And for it to be a first-time event, I have to say it was very successful, and I want to thank everyone for coming out and Mr. Gomez and staff for assisting us, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilwoman Hopkins. And I just think, I think it was a very good turnout. And I was also at the World Refugee Day on June 27th, which was Sunday, that was very insightful for me as well. And that was actually my first time attending, so, and it was a nice crowd there too. So I just want to thank everyone for their participation in our citywide event. So that is what we did. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel owns, I want to say Food Fresh and Tahoe Village, he actually donated some things to the Juneteenth event, and it was very, it was very gracious, and I like to see business owners actually contributing to our events also. So thanks to Mr. Patel and Super Fresh.
Man Hassan.
No reports.
Thank you, Councilman Hassan, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Okay, first, I would like to thank the Mayor and Deborah Johnson, particularly for heading up the Juneteenth Celebration and getting that coordinated, for having been our inaugural thing, it really came out so much better than I had even hoped. And I would also specifically like to say thank you, Madam Mayor, for including the educational part of it and organizing a Juneteenth panel earlier in the week, I believe it was Monday. So I think the, the, because Juneteenth is still new to some people, I think the educational portion is so important. So people not just know, hey, this is the commemoration of the end of chattel slavery, but all, all that entails. So thank you both so much. I also got to attend the World Refugee Day, and it was great to be able to honor the journey that these folks have had to undergo and how they, just to make sure that they feel welcome and embraced in our community and celebrated. And then I would also like to thank Clarkston Police Officers, specifically more on a personal note, Officer Andrew Walker and Officer Corelli, who showed up at our house at 4:00 in the morning when someone else showed up in crisis and handled it kindly, compassionately, very well, as Clarkston Police always have. It's always comforting to me to know that we can call them, and regardless of the situation, language barriers, countries, that they handle it intelligently and things happen as they should happen. So I was very grateful for them, that's all.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hopkins. Councilman Perkins. Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I've got, got a couple things this time around. The first, I want to share, I'm not going to share the whole email, but just, we all know, we've got a hard-working city staff, and I'm going to embarrass them a little bit here, because we got a really very kind email from one of our new residents, Miss Susan Patterson, who moved in just down the street from me. And she says, it's an excerpt, "I can't believe to tell you how impressed I was with everyone involved in this project." And so they had some drainage issues down there, Robin Gomez, Larry Kaiser, Cash Tani, and their crew really went the extra mile to help us. "I want to sincerely thank everyone involved, Clarkston is very lucky to have caring, qualified employees on your staff. This is a compliment to them, too often you get letters of complaints from residents, this is what I like. This first experience in Clarkston was such a positive experience for us, and I felt I should share it with your members." So just want to encourage, just extend my appreciation as well to our staff on the call, and that you guys work very hard, often very long hours. just want to encourage, just extend my appreciation as well to our staff on the call, and that you guys work very hard, often very long hours, and are often not appreciated for the work you put into things. So I'd pass that along. I was actually instructed to pass it along, I should clarify. So in terms of events, I attended a webinar on broadband infrastructure programs on June ninth. Learned a little bit about some potential match grants, which we can talk about later, once we kind of get some of the details of this ARPA funding. And we that's through NTIA, so I'm happy to talk more with interested members of council on that. I also had the pleasure of attending the GMA District Three meeting on the fifteenth and got to meet mayors and council members from other cities. It was a great opportunity just to compare notes and some of the challenges we're looking at. And get a legislative update as well. So some of the things that I think we're hoping to see happen may be a long shot is to see greater authority given to cities just around being able to to monitor and regulate rental communities. There's some stuff coming down the pipeline with that. Again, it's a petition. I don't know if it's actually going to gain any traction there. So hopefully, we can see some movement there to where we can get better landlord tenant law and protections for those of us in our city that rent. Also, I had the pleasure of attending both Juneteenth festivals as a volunteer. So thank you again, Madam Mayor, and Councilwoman Johnson and Councilwoman Hopkins for the hard work that all of you put into those. It was an honor to participate in those, especially it being such a momentous occasion, as the first time it's been declared and recognized as a federal holiday. And our first celebration is, and second, I guess, celebration is a city. So we're ahead of the game. And then finally, I did attend the World Refugee Celebration on June twenty-seventh. And it was great to see all the organizations that support members of our community who are have adopted the U.S. as their home and allowed us to adopt them as our neighbors and friends. So I just want to thank CRSA, Women's Network, I'm going to miss somebody here, the vendors that were there selling amazing food, just for all the hard work they put in on a day-to-day basis for that as well. So I have nothing further to report.
Thank you, Councilman Perkins, and we really appreciated you during Juneteenth. So thanks a lot. For the mayor's report, I also, again, had the opportunity to do a panel for Juneteenth as well as help with the actual activities, both both times, the nineteenth as well as the rescheduled date. And so again, I want to make sure to give a special thanks to Clarkston Culture Fest, Women's Watch Africa, and WOW Afro, as well as the Clarkston Development Foundation for their support with the event as well. So thanks a lot for that. I attended and gave greetings at World Refugee Day, so was very excited to be a part of that. Additionally, I also participated on a White House call about community leaders regarding COVID and how to make sure that we continue to get our communities vaccinated. And so that was a very important call that the White House had scheduled. Last week, I had the pleasure of meeting the Deputy Secretary of State as well as the Senior Bureau Officer in Clarkston to talk about how wonderful, in terms of refugees, we are in settling resettling them to our community. And so this was an event that was set up with the Alliance of the Refugee Resettlement Agencies. So I was very honored to let them know what the secret sauce was in terms of our ability to welcome refugees into our community. Additionally, I got notice from the Tiny Homes Village, from Mr. Will, that they're going to have the open house on July seventeenth, and more information will be forthcoming, and we'll make sure to promote it and send it out to you. So we're very excited because now we're finally getting to welcome in our tiny village, the first in the United, first in the state of Georgia. Next, we also have NAMI DeKalb that will have a mental health fair in Mylum Park on July seventeenth. And so you'll have additional information with times and everything related to that as well. I'm very excited to also work with Workforce DeKalb. And so on August eleventh, at the Clarkston Community Center, we will hold a job fair. So we want to make sure in terms of providing jobs for our community. And that is what we're working with them as well as the Georgia State Prevention Research Center members. And so we're all working together to make sure that we have great jobs for our community members. And so those are just a few things in terms of what I'm working on now and what's happening in our city. And so with that, that concludes the reports. We will now move into public comments. Any member of the public may address the council during the time allotted for public comment. Each attendee will be allowed three minutes for comments at the discretion of the presiding officer. The public comment period will be limited to forty minutes, and it is not a time for dialogue. If your public comment contains a series of questions, please submit them to the city clerk in writing. This will facilitate follow-up by the council or staff. The city council desires to allow an opportunity for public comment. However, the business of the city must proceed in an orderly, timely manner. Mr. Gomez, who do we have signed up?
We have Warren Hadlock.
Mr. Hadlock, please proceed.
We're also known as Tom tonight. I wanted to take a moment to, there are two items on the agenda I wanted to speak to that I am very strongly opposed to granting any variances for setbacks at the East Avenue, at the East Avenue project, I don't want to call it development, but project. I think you folk realize that most of you, you know, there's a new person on the council, but it's important to realize, keep in mind that whenever you grant variances, and this this man has already received a bunch of concession from the city on that property. But whenever you grant variances, you set yourself up for somebody else saying, oh, you gave them this, you got to give it to me. And before long, the zoning ordinance doesn't mean squat. And so I very strongly urge you to to turn down that request. Also, for the Dog House Club, or whatever it is, on Rocket, these people have been a recurring, consistent, ongoing problem with the city and maintaining their well, they're not maintaining their adherence to the city ordinances. And I understand that there's actually been a violation of the liquor law, the liquor laws of the city. I think buying liquor from a liquor store for sale there in violation of state law that says it has to be bought through a distributor. It hides revenue, it does, you know, there are other things involved. But I believe that it's time to take a hard look at maybe revoking their liquor license. If not indeed their business license as well. Once again, you overlook it, you run the risk of somebody else violating something later on, and they say, well, but you let them get by with it. So I urge you to be strict in enforcing, in enforcing our ordinances. In Friendship Forest, I'm, of course, the Friendship Forest guy, I guess. I don't consider it my backyard. I don't consider it my property. It doesn't belong to me. But I'm a steward. I'm one of the stewards of that place, and I have been for twenty, almost twenty-seven years. And I've seen a lot of things going on that are just, you know, we've invested 1.9 million dollars in that place, and a lot of it was wasted on the pavilion and oversized boardwalks. But still, there's a good bit of money that's gone in there, and I see a lot of invasive species coming back. A lack of of maintenance in general, protection of wetland areas. And also in the so-called conservation area toward the very back of the of the sanctuary. Up until this year, we kept a path cut around that area, which was was good. It allowed people access. And it was a walk-around, it was a little trail. For some reason, this year, the staff has decided to cut that out, and I would love to see it see that reversed, and let's just have a five or ten-foot trail around it. It would be excellent as far as giving me access and others' access to removal of non-native and invasive species like privet heads and kudzu. So I once again ask the staff, I know this is not a time for comments from the staff, but please cut that five-to-ten-foot trail like we've been doing for the past nineteen years. And let's keep it cut down. Most of that path is just invasive stuff anyway. Just help help us, help you, help the friends of Friendship Forest, help the whole city in in keeping those things under control, trying to get a handle on invasive species. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hadlock. Mr. Gomez, who who do we have next?
Mr. Brian Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Evening, everybody. First of all, I'd like to start off with thanking Larry and Robin for the personal attention they've been giving to the Roland Street Project. Work is flying along, and I've already noticed an improvement in the road drainage. The work crews are also, again, have been very productive and very tidy. So it's been a great work crew to watch work, very nice guys, too. I've talked to them a couple of times. This week, last weekend, I had the joy of, we biked to two events in the city, which was wonderful, biked to Juneteenth, Bravo for putting on a wonderful event for everybody who was involved with that, and then to World Refugee Day. So I love the fact that I can bike to such awesome events in my city. The one thing I noticed was, when we were coming down the backside of Mylum Park, was the upper field was looking great. And I think it might be time to consider renaming that upper field. I'd like to ask them to think about, you guys to think about this, because the field at one point was named Armistead Field. Unfortunately, Billy Armistead, who's named after, was one of our former councilmen who was arrested for bribery and resigned from the city council in disgrace. We don't need anything in the city named after this person. So I don't know what we would call Armistead Field now. Upper Mylum Field works, but I've seen it used still in some naming in the city within the last few years, where people still were mentioning it as Armistead Field, not knowing what it is. So if we have a nice new green field, it's time for a rebirth and rename it. That's all I've been asking. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez.
We have, I'm sorry, Mr. Marques, Mike, Michael Marques.
Marques, please.
I don't have any comments at this point, but may raise my hand later on if if need be.
Well, at this point, from a council meeting, if you have any comments, please make them now, because when we go through the agenda items, this isn't the time to do that like we did with the work session.
All I'm saying is, there's been times when someone's put words in my mouth, and I was not able to respond. So if that happens, then I just want the opportunity to respond. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez.
Susan Hood.
Good evening. I want to say that I have had a number of friends mention how good Clarkston is looking. And I have to totally agree. Our downtown and the entrance, major entrance roads to the city, especially Ponce, looking excellent. And I think we can all tell a big difference. Refuge Coffee has a new sign that adds to that look. Wanted to also say how much I enjoyed the first annual Juneteenth event. I thought that the kids were having a good time. The food was good. Everybody was enjoying themselves. We had a great DJ, and I thought it was a success for the city. I want to mention about the potential re-re call of the ordinance to extend alcohol-serving hours repeal, I should say. And I hope, I expressed my views on that at work session. I hope that that ordinance will be repealed and that we can go back to reasonable hours. And also on the variance for the East Avenue property, if that is voted on tonight, I hope that it does not pass. This property has been given every opportunity to be as dense as possible. If we are going to allow this kind of approach to development, then I don't know why we would even bother having zoning regulations if we continue to let a developer get variance after variance. As the developer admitted himself at the work session, he he has no hardship. He is responsible for needing a variance if he wants to put the porch in his rear yard setback, his front porch. And he had, he can solve that problem himself by reconfiguring the footprint of his building. That's all I have, and everyone have a good evening.
Mr. Gomez, who do we have next?
Tracy Bishop.
Mr. Bishop. Mr. Bishop. And I'll say it one more time. Mr. Bishop. Okay, hearing none. Mr. Gomez, who do we have next?
Hey, hey there.
Okay, all right. How you doing, Mr. Bishop?
Sorry about that. Just threw up a different interface. So I hope I get my time to start now. Anyway, I was thanking you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the time. I may talk again when we talk about taxes. Because, you know, it is the Fourth of July coming up, and it's all about taxation without representation. Now, I've been a taxpaying citizen here in Clarkston for well over fifteen years. I've worked with various administrations on projects that have improved this city, and I am a good citizen. Anyway, just wanted to state that. Don't want to waste time stating my address, which everybody should know by now. But I am glad to hear we got SLOZ money, and I am so glad to hear that all of you are managing to attend all these events, which is spectacular. And I'm not, hmm, I guess what my point is, is that until the mayor made a couple of comments in her section, not one councilperson said anything that they were doing to actually benefit anybody in Clarkston materially. It's all like this feel-good, we've all attended these celebrations that commemorate X, Y, or Z. So I want to talk to you about y'all's jobs, because I delivered to you, I believe it was in March of last year, an ethics review, in which I also stated, under the city charter, and we can go through it, the council has the right and the power and the duty to investigate improprieties in the city government. I listed off a great deal of impropriety. It's all dealing with former Mayor Terry's regime. But we discuss things like nondisclosure of election donations, who the city does business with, who disclose, not this, and it's not disclosed that they made significant donations to Mayor Terry's Senate campaign. There were many other issues, you know it. I mean, I guess one day I'll just have to post it publicly for everybody to see everything that I had requested answers about. I got no answers from no one, from anyone, pardon me. I didn't even get an acknowledgement from one sitting councilperson of their receipt of the complaint. And it was delivered to each and every one of y'all, well, three of y'all know him, perhaps. And it was delivered to each and every one of y'all. Well, three of y'all know, perhaps. Um, oh no, one of y'all know, perhaps. I know better. Um, so y'all received this report and then didn't even acknowledge it, didn't even acknowledge me. The fact that I filed such a report and it's documented, it's footnoted. I mean, I made legitimate complaints about the city and the way it does its business, which I found to be unethical. Y'all call yourself a city of ethics. I don't think so. Now, the bigger thing here is, and I have talked to the mayor and I do appreciate your time and this respect, Madam Mayor. Um, before the job happened in my backyard, the one that I was so upset about in March of 2019, before, uh, that job was done, when the county workers were allowed to come on to my property, the former city manager had made certain assertions to my wife in my backyard. He was actually standing in my backyard where all these, uh, occurrences happened that I've mentioned over time, armed guards violating a ROE at gunpoint. Things that I've actually said in meetings, I said that night that y'all sat back and, and put me in jail under false pretenses. I was telling you that the mayor was a fraud because of all the destruction, the environmental destruction. And we saw the aerial when y'all were accepting that piece of property into the city at the tip of Sarah's Creek over there. You saw how they clear cut that law. You saw what was done. I didn't lie, but not one of you, not one, not the city manager, the current city manager, not the mayor, not one of you councilpeople ever came to me and said, "Why are you so upset? What are you talking about environmental damage out there? What do you mean they destroyed everything? What do you mean they violated the ROE? What do you mean that they abused your property? So while you're giving free mailboxes to everybody on Norman Road in East Ponce and your landscape and, uh, Refuge Coffee and you, the city are basically subsidizing that place because you hold all of your events there. You don't hold them anywhere else. That's like a big party place. For you. It's not for me. I pay taxes. So, you know, y'all violated an ROE, just like the county violated an ROE.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
I expect to hear from you, Madam Mayor, with an answer to that.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gomez, who else?
That is all, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we will now proceed on to new business, which would be-
I'm sorry, Mayor, one more, Mr. Moore, Dean Moore. My apologies. Dean Moore.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a tough act to follow. Um, I, I did want to mention that I enjoyed the celebrations. It's great to see people out celebrating again. And, uh, I would, would have liked to have seen the, uh, American flags put out for the Juneteenth celebration, if that's not offensive to any, uh, any one of the, uh, Black community. Um, hopefully next year, we'll have full, um, full celebration and, uh, recognition by the city of, uh, of that, uh, celebration. So, uh, thanks and, uh, look forward to, uh, opening up Market Street for celebrations. That's what it's designed for. So, um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Gomez, that concludes our, our public comments.
Yes.
Thank you. So we will proceed to new business, which is G1 approved 2021 millage rate with the presentation. Proceed, Mr. Gomez.
This is the third and final, uh, public hearing, an opportunity to receive comment, to have discussions uh, regarding the city's proposed millage rate, uh, for fiscal year 2021. As I've stated at the prior two meetings, we received our evaluation from DeKalb County for the current year back in May. We are required by the county to provide to them a council adopted a millage rate by the end of this week. Um, the reason why these meetings were moved back a week, uh, back in December when we put together the calendar for the current year, the calendar of all council work sessions and meetings. So, at, after this presentation, I'll give a brief presentation. We will, uh, again, have the public hearing, uh, to take comments, uh, and then the council will review and discuss and then make a determination to adopt a resolution setting the final millage rate, uh, at the, the end of this process. So again, as I stated, this is the third and final, uh, public hearing, uh, well, presentation and public hearing on the 2021, um, City of Clarkston Millage Rate. As I'd stated before, the tax digest or the total amount that we receive, uh, is an appraised, lists on the appraised value for all property, land and buildings uh, within a particular area for us within our corporate city limits. That is determined by DeKalb County, um, by the County Tax Assessor's Office. So again, the City of Clarkston does not determine the value of anyone's property. Um, the only component, the, the main component that we do determine, and again, the council adopts, is the actual tax rate or the millage rate. So we have an appraised value that's the total value determined by the county, uh, based on their market and other data. And then the assessed value is what property owners pay taxes on, the property taxes. So typically 40% of the appraised value is the assessed value. Um, and again, folks may qualify and receive various exemptions that further lower the appraised value subject, excuse me, the assessed value subject to the property tax rate. Again, as I stated, the tax digest is the value of all the property in a specific or geographic area and it is provided to us at 40% of the total appraised value. A mil or the tax rate is defined essentially as $1 for every $1,000 of taxable property value. So if you're, if you're- Then the taxpayer would owe $10 for every $1,000 of assessed value. The rollback millage rate is the millage rate that would raise the same amount of revenue in the current years and the prior years. That millage rate is applied to the current year's tax digest. Our numbers, the, our 10-year gross digest history, again, we experienced the decline in the early 2010s, but since then have rebounded and have seen increases every year, uh, including a 14% increase from last year to the current year. Approximately a 256% increase from 2014 to 2015. The increase is due to increases in residential, commercial values. Again, our residential value is almost 20% and commercial nearly 14%. So how we calculate, uh, the millage rate, we have had, had the same millage rate for, going on five years now at 15.89. As we have discussed before, the rollback millage rate, 14.557. Um, if that's the rate that the council would adopt, then the millage, the difference would be 1.33, 3 mils or 8.4% decline. The value of one mil, approximately 252,195.79. Again, based on the discussions at the pre- previous meetings, th- this slide shows what our tax revenue would be that is subject to the millage rate. Uh, it's our property taxes, which are comprised of real property and personal property, but also property owned by public utilities as well as motor vehicle taxes. So our, when the council adopted the current year budget back in December, the budget for these four taxes, again, that are determined from the millage rate, uh, the adopted budget, 3,770,384. Based on our preliminary tax digest, the revenues are listed underneath that number at the varying millage rates that we have discussed, our current millage at 15.89. If we, if the council simply adopted a millage rate of 15, even, even or flat at 15.00. If the millage was decreased by one mil, then at 14.89 mils, it would generate the 3,755,195. And the last one is the rollback millage rate, the 14.557 mils, uh, again, which would be the revenue listed there. This slide shows our, the history of the millage rate, uh, all the way back to 2011. Again, with some increases and then decreases beginning in 2015, followed again in 2016 with them some, the same, uh, up until this year that based on the, again, the prior two meetings, it would, it appears that, that the millage rate will be lower than 15.89. These are some of the proposed millage rates for some of the other cities. They're not final, just, well, some of them maybe, but um, we didn't, didn't go through an update, uh, this slide we will for the future, once all the cities adopt their millage rates. You can see that we've been third highest in the county. Uh, and again, but it, it appears that at least the cities are continuing to uh, lower their millage rate as their tax digest has increased like ours. And here's, every city is experiencing an increase in their tax digest, just like we are. So for a taxpayer, again, this slide shows if your property is appraised at 75,000, it's assessed or taxed at 40% of that value. So in this instance, it would be 30,000. Again, a mil, one mil is $1 for every thousand in taxable value. So you simply would divide the taxable value of 30,000 by a thousand and then multiply by the millage rate. I've included the four discussed millage rates on here and what the difference in city property taxes. Again, there are, in that, essentially three different types of tax on everyone's bill, property tax bill. Uh, there are several at the county stops and then the city and then the school district. So there are, just so everybody's aware of that, this only represents the city's taxes and not the county or the school board. The next slide is a property of its appraised at 100,000. And again, you see the difference in the city property taxes at the four, um, millage rates. And again, um, if, again, depending on the millage rate that the council adopts, you can see the difference in uh, what a property taxpayer would pay. So if the council were to lower the millage rate by one mil to 14.89, then a property that's appraised at 100,000, again, the tax, it would be taxed on 40,000. And you can see that by decrease, decreasing the millage rate by one mil, that property would pay about 40 less or fewer dollars in property taxes in the current year. And I just continue with appraised value in this slide at 150,000. And again, the difference in the property taxes based on the millage rate that the council, uh, would look to adopt. And the last one is a property appraised at 200,000, again, with an assessed value of 80,000 and the, what the tax, the city property taxes would be at the four listed, uh, mil, millage rates. Be happy to answer any questions or comments from the council, but-
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Um, we then will proceed with the public hearing. Um, to take public comments on the 2021 millage rate. And at this time, if you have signed up for the comments, you will be allowed three minutes to provide comments. Um, we will start with those who are in favor of, um, making, uh, lowering the millage rate or keeping it at the same amount. So, Mr. Gomez, would you please provide the people who've signed up?
Well, Mr. Medford.
Mr. Medford.
Uh, yes, I support lowering it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gomez, who's next?
Mr. Moore.
Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore? Mr. Moore? We'll come back to him. Mr. Gomez, who else signed up?
Uh, Mr. Bishop.
Mr. Bishop.
Hey there. Um, yeah, I wanna, I wanna talk about the village rate because I think it should be a lot less than that. I had asked a question a couple of years ago. I had asked it directly of the council at a December 2, 2018 meeting, and that was what the golden parachute of the former, uh, city manager was. In fact, that was a man who had to leave because he was disgraced, the council covered up for it for years and waged a political vendetta against citizens, specifically me on behalf of Ted Terry. So, uh, I want to know, how much money did, are you still paying out to, uh, the former city manager? I asked that question at a budget meeting and was thrown out. Now I want to have an answer to that question.
Bishop, I don't have that answer in front of me right now, but we can follow-
I know, but the, I just want to make a note, uh, Madam Mayor, the, the vice mayor sitting there that had me thrown out of the meeting. He hasn't provided me with that answer for well over a year. And this is my complaint with paying any taxes to the City of Clarkston because I have no representation at all. I don't even get decent police protection here. Now, I'm offended by the fact that everybody can go to all kinds of celebrations. They can landscape a coffee shop. They can give people new mailboxes. But when citizens come to this body asking for actual redress because their constitutional rights were violated or because their property was violated, y'all do nothing, not one thing on the citizens' behalf. Not a taxpaying citizen. But we can have parties for everybody. Your job is to take care of your business in the city, to take care of the citizens. And that is mighty missing in any report I heard anybody give about what they've been doing over the last month. Nobody is looking out for me. And I'm the one who pays all the bills there. So you need to give me a refund. You can charge everybody else what you want to because I'm offended by this body. Now, I'm sorry to say that, Madam Mayor, because you know I'm fond of you. But I'm sick and tired of the abuse that I face from you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Anyone else, Mr. Gomez?
Those were the only ones who signed up. You have Mr. Moore, I think he's back.
Are you back, Mr. Moore?
I am back. Yes.
You can speak now.
Well, I was happy to follow Tracy again. And, uh, wanted to say that in setting a millage rate and setting the budget, it would be nice if we could um, have enough money so at the end of the year, when we have the appeals and the shortfalls, uh, of, um, collecting our taxes, that we can have enough money to make it through without having to borrow money and pay interest and, and, and fees to, um, to go through the year. So I just encourage you not to go to the fallback, uh, rate, but to actually keep it boosted up a little, a little bit for those, um, those times. And looking forward to the fall, we may be running into another pandemic. I think, uh, Councilman Carroll had mentioned that, uh, we're, we're still, uh, not out of the woods yet on the pandemic. Uh, even though I did speak with the, uh, core director, we are the most, uh, vaccinated city in the state of Georgia, so I feel pretty proud about that. Thank you for that comment. And, um, would like to, uh, see if we can set some money aside to, uh, eliminate the, uh, need to borrow money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Gomez, that concludes everyone who signed up?
Yes.
Okay. So this time I will close the public hearing and now- Okay. So this time I will close the public hearing and now move forward to the item um, section C, which is to adopt the twenty twenty one millage rate by the, by ordinance. And so council, at this time, we will take comments from you. Vice Mary Yasu?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I first just, uh, my name was raised, I just wanna mention that um, as far as I'm concerned, uh, any elected, uh, I mean, any uh, city employee gets a retirement. And any former workers get retirement plan. They don't have, they don't get paid anything special more than that. That's all I know. I know all our uh, former employees, they have a retirement plan. And that's all I know. And um, so just to answer the question. And um, talking about the, the tax rate, I, I'm not gonna vote for any increase. I believe that we have to go back to the rollback rate. Um, even with the rollback rate, it's still gonna be a lot. So I just feel uh, it is the right time to put the brakes on our tax increases. Uh, in the last six years, we kept it in the same rate, but the value has been going up, the value has doubled. So this is the right time to stop and um, just hold it on the um, on the uh, on that rate, so of fourteen point five five. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mary Yasu, other council members. And so um, as we're looking at this, I, I would prefer for us to do at least the fourteen point eight nine. Um, that way we can make sure that if we have any appeals, that we have some wiggle room with the appeals. And then that way, um, we are not that far off from our adopted budget. So council, what is your pleasure? I know um, Councilman Hassan, it said fifteen. Um, what is your pleasure in terms of this discussion and what you would like to see? Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, just, um, like I said at the work session, I would feel comfortable doing the fourteen point eight nine, um, actually lowering it, but not too low.
Any other comments from the council?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Hassan.
Uh, would like to be fifteen, you know, that I will go ahead on fourteen point eight nine.
Any other council comments?
Uh, Madam.
Yes, so we'll do Councilman Perkins and then Councilwoman Hopkins.
Uh, briefly, no, I, I agree with the fourteen point eight nine. I think it's uh, it, it does lower it, but it also gives us a little bit of wiggle room. It's, it's not the most aggressive reduction based on the uncertainty we may have coming up the next year. So I'll support that as well.
And Councilwoman Hopkins?
Um, I just wanna point out that the fourteen point eight nine, it lowers the millage rate, but it increases the dollar amount of property taxes each individual home would have to pay. If um, and would bring in more actual tax dollars to the city than the higher millage rate did last year with the, the smaller tax digest. But I'm wondering, one of the uh, public speakers did comment on the idea of putting aside some money so we are not borrowing money every year to make up um, the difference uh, in time between when we receive our money and when uh, tax bills come in. And I'm wondering if we do go with the higher, the fourteen point eight nine, what impact uh, our uh, Mr. Gomez feels that might have on us being able to avoid borrowing money in the future um, to offset that and having to pay interest on that borrowing money until the next year's tax bill comes in.
But would lower the amount that we're, because we've been lowering the amount that we've been borrowing each of the last two years and next year will likely be about half of what we are looking for this year. So again, as, as we do receive more, we have the ability to just have the revenue throughout the year, then we, then that will eliminate the need to borrow the money. Granted, our interest rate for borrowing it is quite low, but it, we are still paying um, about nine thousand dollars and to borrow the five hundred thousand this year. So, but yeah, the, the goal, and as I've said for each of the last two years, that our goal is eventually to not have to do that and have the, the cash flow throughout the year. Again, to be able to just stay fluid the entire year.
Okay. Carol, did you have a comment?
I, I was gonna say that I support fourteen point eight nine, um, just because that gets us almost exactly to the budget revenue that we planned for while still giving a tax cut. And the other thing I would say is that I anticipate making another larger tax cut next year as some of these developments come online and more tax revenue comes in uh, from those developments, I would anticipate going much lower than fourteen point five five the next year. So I would say it, a, a medium sized tax cut this year and a larger one next year.
So with that being said, um, I will entertain a motion from the council.
I have a question before we go to the motion.
Yes.
Yeah, so can, can the city manager uh, tell us the difference of dollar amount between fourteen point five five seven and fourteen point eight nine?
The amounts are listed on the screen, so it's roughly about eighty thousand. Um, I can tell you the exact difference.
It's just under eighty four thousand. It's like eighty three thousand nine hundred eighty one.
Eighty three thousand.
How is that gonna reduce the amount? We are borrowing five hundred thousand. How is that gonna reduce the amount that we're gonna borrow by half?
This, these aren't the only revenues that we receive throughout the year. And again, this represents about a little bit below half of our general fund revenue. So we have other revenues and other revenues have been increasing not at this rate, but some do, most do not, but we have had increases. So as we have revenue growth across multi, you know, most of our revenues, then we're able to again have more, just more cash to be able to continue to, to provide the services without having to borrow money. This is not the only, again, the only revenue source for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, we'll entertain a motion from the council.
I moved that we set the military to fourteen point eight nine.
Second. It's been properly moved in second that we move, we move the military to fourteen point eight nine. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, are you ready for the question? All in favor of moving?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Point of, I believe, uh, Councilman Yas, or Vice Mary Yas, you had a question.
Vice Mary Yasu, go right ahead.
Well, I just, since, since we're on the discussion, so I just wanna let our residents know that we are actually proposing to raise our taxes, right? Even though it's gonna be a little bit lesser, but the tax is gonna go up by, by a certain amount.
So Vice Mary Yasu, in the last five years, we have not, um, we've kept it at fourteen, fifteen point eight nine. So this year, instead of going to the actual rollback rate, we are going to the rate at fourteen point eight nine. Where we're making sure that we leave a cushion from the adopted budget that we have set. So that if we have any appeals, we will have that money so that we're comfortable.
I, I agree, but what I'm saying is, in the last six years, we did not raise the, 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 the military rate. However, the value has doubled and tripled. So we are still, we were still increasing the tax amount that everybody was getting assessed because their value has been going up. And the value even between this year and last year has gone up by fourteen percent. So we are effectively uh, proposing to raise the tax dollar amount. I'm not saying the, the, the military.
Um, thank you for your comment, but again, instead of having the fifteen point eight nine, we, from a body, will vote on the eighteen point eight, fourteen point eight nine. And so it is not the rollback rate. You are correct in that, in that point of view. But it is a decrease in what we would normally have from a military rate from what we've had previously for the last five years.
Yes, but all I'm saying is, look at the numbers from twenty sixteen, the value has gone up from a hundred forty seven to two hundred and fifty two thousand, a million. So um, I'm just talking about the assessment value. I'm not talking about the military. I know I was in those uh, council chambers, so I know that we never actually increased it. However, we never rolled back to the rollback rate. We never did. So I feel like this is the right time to go back to the rollback rate, but apparently uh, I don't seem to get an agreement, so I'm just mentioning.
Well, thank you for mentioning that point. And again, we are also being very mindful of where we are from a budget. We're also being mindful of the fact that we are doing a reduction from where we have the original rate. But we're also making sure that we have enough cushion between the two. So I'm glad you brought up those points. And if there are any other points that the council would like to make at this time, I will entertain them gladly. Hearing no other discussion, are you ready for the question? All those in favor of moving the military rate from to fourteen point eight nine, say aye?
Aye.
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 So Councilwoman Ho, Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilman Carroll?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Perkins?
Aye.
Councilman Hassan?
Aye.
And Vice Mary Yasu?
Nay.
Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. We will proceed to the next agenda item, which is G two. And thank you, Mr. Gomez. And that is to reschedule the August city council meeting. Mr. Gomez?
Just as you stated, Mayor, to re, looking to reschedule the council, the August fifth council meeting that had been rescheduled last December from its normal Tuesday uh, slot of August, uh, excuse me, August the second, uh, excuse me, August the third, uh, due to, we're going to hold national night out on Tuesday, August the third, so we had rescheduled the Thursday, August the fifth. Now, several on the council will be going to the Georgia Municipal Association Conference uh, that August the fifth. So we're, uh, however the council would like to proceed, we can re, looking to reschedule the meeting if that's the desire of the council, to either Monday, August the second or Wednesday, August the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. I think we had consensus last meeting that we would move it to August the fourth, which is on a Wednesday. So is there any other discussion at this time from the council? Hearing that, I will entertain a motion. Uh, Councilwoman Johnson?
Thank you, Madam. Madam Mayor, I move to approve, um, I move for the count scheduling the August fifth council meeting to Wednesday, August the fourth, twenty twenty one.
Fifth second.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that we move the August council meeting from August um, fifth to August fourth. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of moving the council meeting from August fifth to August fourth, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. And so we will update the calendar so that everyone will know that the meeting date has changed. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is three, G three, issue call for election and set qualifying period for November general election. Mr. Gomez?
As we discussed last week, this item is to set the election, the November second, twenty twenty one uh, city of Clarkston council and mayor election. This issue the call and to set the qualifying period for that November second election. Uh, Georgia code requires that everybody, each candidate for city office must file a notice of the candidacy with our superintendent of, of the election, uh, which is our city clerk, Ms. Ashby. And then that the superintendent must designate the days of the qualifying period, which shall be no less than three days and no more than five days. And again, the qualifying time, times during the day are to be between no earlier than eight thirty M, eight thirty AM and shall end no later than four thirty PM. It is our recommendation that we issue the call for the November second uh, ele, general election, which will include elections for mayor and three council seats. And that we set the qualifying period for the three days be, listed as Monday, August the sixteenth, Tuesday, August the seventeenth, and Wednesday, August the eighteenth. Starting at eight thirty AM each one of those three days and ending at four thirty PM, with the exception of a lunch break from twelve PM to one PM. So anybody interested in qualifying for the city elections would need to qualify on one of those three days at those stated times, and that will occur at Clarkston City Hall Annex located at one zero five five Roland Street.
Mr. Gomez, um, are there any questions as it relates to this agenda item? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I moved to approve the recommended call for Na, November the second, twenty twenty one general election and set the qualifying period for the general election for the three days um, from Monday, August the sixteenth, twenty twenty one until Wednesday, August the eighteenth, twenty twenty one, starting at eight thirty AM to four thirty PM daily, except during a lunch, a daily lunch break from twelve to one PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly, Mr. Gomez, leave it, leave it down there. It's been properly moved in second that um, this, this, the council uh, approves the call for the November second, twenty twenty one general election and to set the qualifying period for the general election for three days from Monday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty one, until Wednesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty one, starting at eight thirty AM to four thirty PM daily, except during a daily lunch app, lunch break from twelve PM to one PM. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the proposed uh, item, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, I mean, all against, say nay? Motion passed. Thank you. And we will now move to the next agenda item, which is G four. And that is a public hearing on the conditional use permit request from Mohammed Balil Qatar for thirteen fifty three Rocket Road Suite B one, Clarkston Zone NC two, moderate density neighborhood commercial for a laundry mat. Ms. Cowie?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mad, Madam Mayor and Council, tonight's public hearing again is to discuss a conditional use permit request from Mohammed Balah Khatak for thirteen fifty three Rocket Road Suite B one. The request surrounded by various land uses that include an apartment community, adult entertainment business, gas station, hair salon, a smoke shop and various retail stores. Conditional use permits are considered based on four criteria points that are outlined in the ordinance section three twelve, conditional use permit. While this aerial area will be at an advantage to offer personal laundry services, there are activities that may cause limitations on the hours of operation. This use can coexist with the surrounding uses in the area. With the information presented, staff and the planning and zoning board recommended approving the request with the listed eleven conditions as outlined. The applicant is available to answer any additional questions or concerns you may have after the public hearing, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Cowie, and at this time, we will open for a public hearing. If there's anyone who has signed up, this is your opportunity to make any comments at, on this particular agenda item. Mr. Gomez, have, do we have anyone signed up for this particular item?
Yes, uh, start with Mr. Medford.
Medford, and you will be allowed three minutes for comments.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to thank the applicant.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to thank the applicant for, again, staying within the city. I know he had to reel Akina's plans, uh, to this location, but I appreciate him choosing to stay within Clarkston. And I definitely support, uh, the approval of his request. I think it'll be a good location for his business. And, uh, thank you for port- supporting the city.
Mister, Mister Medford. Mr. Gomez, who else do we have sign up?
Uh, Mr. Moore, Dean Moore.
Moore.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I support the, uh, the location and the, uh, function of this, and, uh, I think that, uh, we should support the hours that would be best for the, for the, uh, operation of his, uh, services to the community within, uh, within that, um, that location. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Gomez, do we have anyone else signed up?
Uh, just the, was the applicant, Mr. Katak, who Ms. Cowie said is on the call.
So at this time, if no one else, I will close the public hearing and allow Mr. Qatar the opportunity to speak. Mr. Qatar, thank you so much.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. I really appreciate that. Uh, and I truly appreciate everyone who's actually supporting, uh, the conditional use permit. Uh, and I'm very honored to be in, uh, Clarkston doing business. Uh, and, uh, I welcome any questions if you guys have any, uh, really looking forward to, uh, opening up the store as soon as we can.
Grateful that you still want to stay in Clarkston and, and, and you moved your location. So thank you so much. Uh, council, did you have any other comments at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Perkins.
Uh, just wanted, uh, just to clarify with, with Mr. Katak and then the rest of the council. We had had a brief discussion in the work session to possibly ex allow him to extend his hours to nine PM. Um, keeping in mind some of, uh, our, you know, folks in our community might have later shifts and might need those extended hours. And so I just wanted to see if the right, where the rest of the council was on that, and also Mr. Katak, if he had anything you wanted to add to that as well.
And this is Councilman Carroll. I guess I would say, you know, I would maybe even go up to ten PM, so I would leave it within his discretion. I just wouldn't want to micromanage, you know, the businesses' hours necessarily, when especially when there are other businesses that are open that late in the same shopping center. But if, you know, that the council or Mr. Katak has something. I'm open to hearing it.
Okay, so Councilwoman Johnson, no, wait a minute. Councilwoman Johnson had her hand, and then I'll let you speak. Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a woman doing business in the city near any of those places on Rocket, based on their activities, I wouldn't want to be in the facility after dark. Um, because they are compromising positions, it puts a woman in a compromising position with her kids. Um, not saying that that would happen, but I'm, I'm comfortable with anything before dark. But nine or ten is just a little late for a woman to be in a laundry mat. I think. That's just my personal opinion.
Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I also agree with Councilmember, um, uh, Carroll and Perkins. I think, um, uh, we should not, uh, be limiting the hours. Um, I think, uh, we need to adopt all the conditions except for the last, uh, which is the hours of, um, operation. I mean, the hours operation, I think they just should be left to, to, uh, well, if necessary, okay, ten PM is fine. But I think it should be left to the business owner to, to decide, uh, what is good for his clients. If he feels, uh, the clients are not safe, I think it might be not safe for him either. So I, I don't see why, uh, we have to put, uh, too much restriction on it. So I'll, I'll, if we have to limit it, it's, uh, we have to cap it to ten PM maybe. But if not, I don't see why we have to limit it to, uh, seven or eight PM at all.
Any other, and Councilwoman Hopkins.
Yes, um, I mentioned this in the work session, but I think if we find the area to be frightening or dangerous, then we should be addressing the frightening and dangerous people and not the people coming in to do the laundry. I personally think people who wash their clothes are okay to come in contact with women who dance. I know that women who dance also do sometimes wash their clothes, and they may have to do it at odd hours. I don't see any reason at all that we should be restricting the hours on a laundry mat. I have run twenty-four hour restaurants before and have to say I've had to wash clothes at odd times. And I, I don't understand why we're restricting clothes washing at all, rather than trying to restrict anyone we would consider to be dangerous. So I, I would support issuing the license and allowing, um, the business owner to set his own hours. I, I, I'm against restricting clothes washers.
So what I'm hearing is that from the staff recommendations that the council would be fine with recommendations one through four. Um, and then allowing him the opportunity to set his hours. Mr. Qatar, would you like to speak at this time?
Uh, so only thing I would like to say here is that, uh, you know, I'm new to your city, so I don't really know it as well as you guys do. You know, a lot of you folks are actually residents in the city. I've been here for many, many years. Uh, you know, I pass through it come and go. Uh, most interaction I've had is, uh, in the past few months, I've been just trying to open up a business and, you know, in the city of Clarkson. So I draw, so I drive those streets and I, and I, and I looked around at the shopping strips to see what kind of a vibe I get. Uh, you know, what, you know, kind of environment that is. So I think, um, uh, you know, I guess if it's a safety perspective, uh, and, uh, and, you know, uh, that is the reason why the hours, um, have to be limited. Uh, then, then, uh, I think Ms. Hopkins have a very good point is that, uh, you know, it is, it is more of, uh, uh, you know, issue of, uh, managing the security rather than, uh, you know, very limited hours, if you will. For example, I mean, you can actually look at a lot of other laundry mats, um, and like my other store, you know, we used to be open twenty-four hours before. And, uh, night times, the only challenge that I had was a lot of homeless folks trying to, you know, make it a home. Uh, but, uh, that's about it, you know? Uh, and then because of COVID, we limited ours on to only the daytime. And, uh, now we close, uh, eleven PM at my other store. And, uh, you know, we have, we have some lounges and, uh, club per se, not the same type of club, but, you know, close per se in that same shopping strip where I have my existing store. And, uh, I don't really have any issues with that. But I understand at the same time that here we may, you know, we may be dealing with a different traffic. Then again, you guys know this area a lot better than I do, so I'm open to any comment suggestions.
Maybe a matter of you just kind of getting a feel for what the patrons around there would want.
Correct.
My, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you. I also would just wanna kind of, uh, add a little bit to what Councilmember Hopkins was saying. Um, I'm kind of a little bit puzzled at how safe, how scary this place is. I mean, there is a, I know there is, um, an adult entertainment over there, but the adult entertainment they follow, they have, there is also laws that they don't do it outside. This is all enclosed indoors. And the, the dancers, you wouldn't even know who they are outside. You wouldn't tell if they are. I mean, they're not that scary people. I don't see what's going on here. But, uh, all I see is, um, uh, there are businesses around there. I feel it's safe there. That area is pretty safe. And if it's not, I think the business owner should definitely co- help with the city police and in addressing the situation instead of saying women can't go this late. Or, I mean, this, if this is not safe for women, I think we definitely have a problem here. So I, I think every part of our city should be safe for women to walk around, to jog at any time in the hour. I know they might be not feel safe, but I think to go to a laundry mat should not be that scary. So I think that we have already discussed all these things. Uh, let's go ahead and approve this without their fifth recommendation.
That being said, I will entertain a motion from the council on, on the items and making sure that you see the staff recommendations and to take that into consideration when you make your motion. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion from someone.
I have a motion.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I move that we, uh, approve, uh, this conditional use permit with all the staff recommendations, uh, one to four, except number five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the council, uh, approved the conditional use permit with the staff recommendations of one through four, with the exception of five. Is there any further discussion?
The one thing I would discuss is, I would clarify, are you also adding the planning and zoning recommendations or just the staff recommendations?
Carol, and then it was another piece to that, that we, from the work session, we wanted to get some clarity in terms of the coin operated machines so that he would be able to use like the game machines like, um, uh, uh, Pac-Man and those other machines. Thank you for making that point. So we can amend the motion, or, or you can, uh, Council, Council, Vice Mayor Yasu, you can rescind your motion.
I can amend it. I want to add that the business owner, I remember he mentioned, what do you call the names of those, uh, the different, um, kind of machines? I don't remember the exact name of them.
Yes, so they actually classify them as class A and class B. So class B are the ones that are objectable here, uh, that I'm hearing. Uh, those are the ones that are gambling type machines that you see in the gas stations. Uh, class A are the ones like arcade games, like the stuff you see at Chuck E. Cheese's.
All right, so I'm gonna amend my motion to, uh, also, uh, to approve this, um, request uh, with the staff recommendations, except for, uh, I mean, staff recommendations one to four, except number five. And also planning and zoning recommendations, except for the coarm operated machines to be, uh, to, to, uh, to allow class A amusement machines.
A second.
It's, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the conditional use permit for the coin operated laundry mat with the, with conditions from staff recommendations one through four, um, without, with the exception of number five and the planning and zoning recommendations six through nine with the change on condition number seven for amusement machines. Amusement coin operated machines.
I think we're accepting, uh, number nine as well from the planning and zoning that says you're only allowed to install vending detergent and coin change machines. If, if we are going to allow amusement machines as well.
I don't see the, that one. Can, can, can you pull it a little bit out?
No, um, the planning and zoning board recommendation on number nine says the applicant is only allowed to install vending detergent and change coin machines. So we would have to add class A amusement machines as well.
Yeah, we changing only number seven. We're not changing anything else.
They're saying that is okay. Go ahead, Count, go ahead, Councilman Carroll.
I was gonna say, if you want to allow like, you know, Pac-Man or something like that, I think you would also need to amend nine.
Correct. So we're gonna do this one more time.
Madam Mayor.
Council, Councilman.
Question. Yeah, I was just wondering, uh, Mr. Quinn, can you confirm that we are allowing the right kind of machine? This, uh, I, I wasn't sure if we were going to do this, uh, based on our discussion in the work session. Go ahead.
Thanks for calling on me. Um, so the applicant correctly described the types of machines. Class A is like video games. Class B is like gambling, although that's not what the state calls them. But what I actually wanted to, um, advise the council is that we've learned from the Georgia Supreme Court that we can't regulate those machines. And so I would recommend just not saying anything about, if we want to allow the other kind, then I would just not say anything about machines. Um, but we cannot tell the business whether or not they can have the class B machines that were preempted by state law.
Then it sounds like we need to rescind that motion and then go back and just clean it up to say, you know, one through four from staff excluding five and then six and eight.
All right, I'm sorry about that.
And I just want to make sure, Mr. Quinn, is that, is that, would that be the appropriate one?
If we do that, then we are.
As far as how to get back.
Coin operated machines.
To a motion that the council wants to adopt?
Yes.
No.
I, I think at this point, the, um, although I sometimes get hung up on the Roberts rules myself, I think the best outcome would be, um, to basically withdraw the motion and make a new motion, uh, that lists, yeah, that lists which conditions we do want to apply.
Right. And so with that, I just want to make sure that when we do that. Wait a minute, Count Vice Mayor Yasu. I want to make sure, um, for item seven, we, we need to exclude item seven, and then we also need to exclude item nine. Is that correct?
I got you. All right, so I'm gonna withdraw my mo-
Okay, withdraw your motion. And then I'll entertain a new motion.
All right, I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I move that we appro, we approve this conditional use permit uh, with all the staff recommendations, one to four, except number five. And the planning and zoning board recommendations to not allow alcohol, no allow, no alcohol shall be served or available on the premises. All installed machines shall be new.
There's a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that we approve the conditional u- use permit for a coin operated coin laundry mat with the following five, five, following staff can recommendations of one through four and exclude five. And the planning and zoning board recommendations, no alcohol shall be served or available on the premises. And all, all installed machines shall be new. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I, I couldn't support, if we cannot differentiate between the machines, then I would recommend that we accept the planning and zoning recommendations as is number six through nine. I would rather not have coin amusement machines than to allow more places with the gambling machines. I don't think Pac-Man is a huge benefit to the city. I do think the gambling machines has been a plague to the city and just tends to make the area seedy. And so I, I ex, I would accept the planning and zoning recommendations. I think that's taking out the prohibition of the, uh, gambling machines, I think, is, um, a detriment to the city and dramatically changes the proposal.
So, uh, if I may, Madam.
Yes, please.
Um, as much as I agree with the policy or, or the judgment expressed by Councilwoman Hopkins, it's not, the option facing the city is not to choose between no machines at all and allowing all machines. We have no choice in the class B gambling machines. Those are allowed by state law, and Clarkston cannot change that. Regardless of what we might say about other machines.
Are they allowed in any business?
Yes, any business that meets the state law requirements. There's, it, so, you know, go, we attempted to regulate these machines, and we tried to stay within the state law by only doing so at places where alcohol is served. But the Georgia Supreme Court decided that in the case of, uh, Gebrekadan versus Clarkston, that basically local governments have no say whatsoever over class B gambling machines and that it's just a free for all. Uh, you know, there are certain regulations that we have adopted. And I can't, you know, haven't looked at it in a while, but it's stuff like certain kinds of distance restrictions and certain kinds of, like a limit on how many there can be in the store. kinds of, like a limit on how many there can be in the store. They have to be visible from the entryway to the store. And, you know, perhaps one of those might apply to this location as far as the distancing, but that would be a state law. There's just nothing at all that we can do about those machines other than lobby the General Assembly to stop favoring them in this way.
Madam Mayor.
Your question, or made it clear for you. Okay, Councilwoman Johnson.
And then Councilman Perkins. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Since you're on, Stephen, can you clarify to us how to remove the previous conditional use permit on the other location? What's, what's our, how do we do that the right way? Because right now we'll have two conditional use permits for the same owner.
At different locations?
Yes, sir.
Um, respectfully, I think that's one that's better taken up offline. I'd be happy to talk with you about that.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think it's abundantly, you know, clear that we don't have any legislative power in this, but is, a number of people have observed, Mr. Kattah, we do appreciate businesses that, that keep our community in mind, you know, with, in terms of how they generate revenue. There's nothing we can do in terms of regulating this. But I would ask that as you consider your business, you consider the well-being of the whole of the community and, and that, and, and by, by engagement with you tonight, I, I'm convinced that it is your every intent to, to do that, just through the way that you've approached us. So while we don't have legislative power, I would appeal to, to you as a, a, a resident by proxy of Clarkston, as someone doing business in our community, just to keep in, keep that in mind as you move forward. So thank you, Madam Mayor. That's my comment.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Perkins.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Vice Mayor Yasu.
I think I definitely agree with Councilmember Perkins that, you know, we are really holding Mr. Kattah in good faith on this. However, from previous experience, I might have bad news for you, Mr. Perkins, that there was this gas station that we allowed for alcohol licensing. He said that he's not gonna have those machines. Guess what? He does have those machines right now. So, uh, I, I just hope that Mr. Kattah will choose to, to have the Pokémon or something that children like. But, um, uh, at this point, I guess, I think this, this, uh, he already have heard us that we are actually trying to make sure that we are, you know, gonna accommodate him as a business owner by removing the restriction on the hours. Hopefully, he will also reciprocate by not having the machines that our community doesn't want. Thank you.
Yasu, are there any other comments? In hearing none, are you ready for the question? All in favor of approving the conditional use permit requests for a coin laundromat with the staff recommendations of one through four with the exception of number five, and the planning and zoning board recommendations of no alcohol shall be served or available on the premises, and all installed machines shall be new. Say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say nay? Motion passed. And, and again, welcome again, Mr. Kattar. We hope that you, you heard our concerns and that you'll be willing to make sure that you kind of adhere to those things, especially the machines.
Absolutely. You will not be disappointed, Ms. Perkins.
I know. Thank you. Thank you again. And so we will move on to G five, which is a public hearing, the various requests from William R. Braswell Jr. of Oak Hall Commute Companies, the property located at thirty-eight oh nine East Avenue. Ms. Calwee, do we have something we need to do in terms of this particular item at this time?
Madam Mayor, we do not need to do anything at this time as the applicant has submitted a written request to defer this agenda item into the July twenty-seventh work session to gather the requested information from the June twenty-second work session.
So this G five has been deferred to next council meeting. With that being said, we will move on to G six, which is to approve the Splotz Project zero four dash B plus C Trailhead Mel Avenue, Roland Street Temporary Easement Agreements. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, as we discussed last week, is simply to approve by the five listed properties, construction temporary, non-compensatory easements for driveway work that may encroach on private property of the five reference properties agreed to, work that may encroach on their property. We are not compensating them for that work. It's simply to accomplish the work to engineering architectural standards and certainly the aesthetic that everything looks as it should and matches the, again, what the new road and sidewalks and curbing and driveway aprons will look like.
Mr. Gomez, are there any comments from the council? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion at this time on this item.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion.
Councilman Perkins.
Uh, I move that we approve the, let me, uh, I move that we approve Splotz Project zero four dash B plus C Trailhead slash Mel Avenue slash Roland Street Temporary Easement Agreements.
Second. It's been, it's been properly moved in second that we approve Splotz Project zero four dash B plus C Trailhead Mel Avenue, Roland Street Temporary Easement Agreements. Is, is there any discussion on this item? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Pass. It, I'm sorry. Any, any, anyone with nay? Motion passed. Okay, we will now proceed with the next agenda item, which is G seven, to consider DeKalb Regional Land Bank. Mr. Gomez.
Continuation of last week's item, whether the council wants to consider entering into an intergovernmental agreement with DeKalb County to reestablish the DeKalb Regional Land Bank authority. I have not received any other further communication from the county. Really up to the council how you would like us to proceed.
Mr. Quinn, did you receive any additional information? Mr. Quinn?
Hi, uh, sorry about that. So no, I have not received any information from DeKalb County or its lawyers about this in over a year. At that time, I raised certain concerns that I've shared with the council about the agreement proposed. And as best as I can tell, what happened was they just sent it to Lithonia as is without addressing those issues. And, um, Lithonia approved it, but the land bank needs two cities to sign on to come into effect. And so, uh, I, you know, like I said, I haven't had any communication, but I gather from the lack of communication that the agreement that DeKalb County's commission and Lithonia's council approved is take it or leave it proposal. And so the council will just need to weigh, um, the benefits and the risks.
And to that point, Mr. Gomez and Mr. Quinn, it's not as if right now we have a lot of property that would be beneficial for us to be in the land, land bank. Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely correct.
Okay. All right. I wanted to make sure we noted that piece for consideration in our decision. What is your pleasure at this time, counsel? Councilman Perkins. Okay, Councilman Perkins and then Vice Mayor Yasu.
Madam Mayor, um, I think, given the amount of time we have provided for a response, and seeing as our concerns have not been addressed, um, and again, as you observed, as it has been observed multiple times, in fact, we do have a lack of developable property. I don't think it's wise at this time for us to sign on to an agreement that could present the liabilities that this agreement has without any clear return on investment. Um, I would have a question for Mr. Quinn, uh, I believe if, just in terms of what we'll be voting on in a second, um, if we vote to reject this right now, would it prevent us from, you know, I'm assuming at some point the offer could, offer could be withdrawn, but would it prevent us from picking it back up at a later time if, at some point we realize it would be beneficial, those questions are answered? Just want to make sure I understand that, any potential consequences there.
Sure. I mean, so legally, we could certainly reject the contract proposal and then later come back and approve the same one. But practically, I think that if we did that, the most likely thing is that DeKalb would then move on to trying to find another city to replace Clarkston. That's just speculation, but that's what I anticipate would happen. Um, and so if you wanted to leave the item open for future consideration, I would suggest just, uh, you know, take an action that's specific to that and to instead take a vote to, for example, ask the city attorney to communicate our concerns to the county attorney. Um, and then we'll see if we get it. You know, I have not reached out this most recent time. Um, and I haven't talked to the, the high-ranking county attorneys about this. At the time that they were communicating with me about this over a year ago, it was an outside council that DeKalb County had hired. Can't remember the gentleman's name or firm at this time, but he, he was not an employee of the DeKalb Law Department. So, you know, potentially, if, if the vote were to be, ask the city attorney to communicate with the county attorney about this, obviously I would do that. Might, might not get a response, but I think that would be a way to just sort of keep it open. And I could go to them and say, hey, Clarkston City Council is open to participating in a land bank, but these are their concerns. Can the document be adjusted in these regards? And then perhaps they would give us a response.
I, um, I think, uh, to, to my question, counsel, um, I, I'm, I like having my options open personally. I think, you know, as long as we're not signing away our, you know, rights to anything by postponing it, um, I, I think I like that option of, of postponing this agenda item until, you know, Mr. Quinn gets a response indefinitely. And, uh, and, and at least keeping it open, you know, as long as DeKalb has it on the table. Um, I, my concerns on it assure Mr. Quinn and Mr. Gomez our staff's concerns in terms of the language. Um, and it's, uh, I, I don't like signing on to something where I'm paying a bill, but I'm not getting any service or anything in return. And, and it feels a little bit like that. So, uh, I think my recommendation would be to, you know, postpone this and strike Mr. Quinn to, uh, reach out to the DeKalb County attorneys. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I may, Vice, Vice, Vice Yasu, sorry.
I think I, I definitely agree. Uh, I was actually gonna say the same thing. It seems like DeKalb County is getting hard time finding out of twelve cities in DeKalb County that, uh, there are a lot of the bigger cities than us that have plenty of land available and they don't seem to be interested. So that's kind of makes me curious. So I think it's a lot better to just table it indefinitely until we get a response. Or, uh, just like our city attorney said, just leave it open and not reject it at this point. But, um, probably after we do hopefully some annexation in the future, we could, uh, if we seem like we might benefit from it, we could certainly raise it up again and, um, and bring it back to life. But, uh, at this point, I don't see the reason for the city of Clarkston to, um, to get into an agreement, uh, with, um, intergovernmental agreement while there are a lot of other cities that seem like they're kind of sus, kind of suspicious to me. So I would rather just leave it on the table for now, but not reject it totally. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and just kind of FYI, I did reach out to the, the CEO's office about this, um, to make sure that they followed up with Quinn, but I guess they have not. So I think with us making the appropriate motion, that Quinn can take the lead on this one. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion from the council.
Madam Mayor?
I have a motion.
Yes. Um, Councilman Perkins.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I move that we postpone the consideration of DeKalb Regional Land Bank or joining the DeKalb Regional Land Bank until Mr. Quinn is able to, uh, get our questions answered from the DeKalb County attorneys.
Second.
I second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved in second that the council will postpone their involvement with the, the DeKalb Regional Land Bank until Mr. Quinn is able to talk to DeKalb County's lawyers. Is there any other discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed, say nay? Motion pass. Thank you. And we will move on to item G eight, which is to repeal ordinance nineteen dash four three three to remove late night sales of alcohol from restaurants. Mr. Gomez.
Just as he stated, Mayor, this item is for the council to consider repealing city ordinance nineteen dash four three three regarding alcoholic beverages, late night sales for on the premise, premises consumption, uh, at various businesses, mainly restaurants. As we discussed last week, back in October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, at the council work session, uh, the staff and council discussed the various listed concerns regarding two restaurants that were staying open for the late night sales pursuant to the ordinance that I stated that was adopted on February the fifth of two thousand nineteen. Some of the concerns from the additional hours included just additional excessive noise, additional trash, concerns over traffic and parking, uh, the businesses possibly not in compliance with the bona fide restaurants that they must serve two meals a day. Uh, at the time, back in Oc, in October or, and prior to that, that customers were not wearing masks or observing the social distancing as a result of the pandemic, indoor smoking, other than the permitted hookah at one location, and in general, just the overall appearance that they were operating as a bar lounge or nightclub rather than a restaurant. Uh, since that October twenty-seven, twenty-twenty council work session, there have been similar concerns that periodically, periodically have been raised. Uh, the one of the two restaurants has addressed essentially every concern that has been raised. They will make the necessary corrections. They've been extremely responsive to making the corrections. Um, but some of them do, did, uh, repeat or recur throughout the last, nearly the last, uh, ten months, uh, since that October twenty-twenty meeting. Uh, and there are, the other business just really has not made a significant, has made a much less effort to remediate and comply, remediate the concerns and comply with, with the listed city ordinances. They are listed here on the item, in the agenda item, excuse me, related to noise, outdoor signs, unlawful conduct, uh, purchasing the sales, uh, purchasing liquor, et cetera, from other than licensed, uh, holders or licensed wholesalers. Uh, again, uh, not having a post-certified law enforcement officer present and happy hour promotions providing selling hookah. the two meals per day that they must be open six days per week and sell at least fifty-one percent of their food. And including the production of records and audits, et cetera. So one of the two businesses is currently under, received four code violations that will be heard on July the seventh. So that is the item in front of the council, whether to, for the council to decide to repeal. Again, ordinance nineteen dash four four three adopted back on February the fifth of two thousand nineteen. Happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, did you have any questions at this time? Or comments?
To Councilman Carroll, so when you said one has been cooperative and one is not, I assume you mean Pont Sports Lounge has been cooperative and Doghouse has not been as cooperative?
Correct, yes. For the, again, when we have notified them, they have made a significant effort to make the corrections. It's over the time, everything improves and then it tends to fall back mainly regarding noise, traffic, occasionally trash. Those are the real ones. And whether they were selling two meals per day, which they, clearly they've made that much more visible in the last, I'd say, four months or so that they are selling two meals per day. We also requested information from them to verify that they are selling two meals a day. And they provided monthly data that would indicate that, but upon my, my request, that they provide daily data to verify that, we did not receive that information.
Councilwoman Hopkins.
My concern just about the way this item is written is that it seems punitive to a specific business or individuals. And I don't think that's the way we should be setting laws. I think that we have to consider a law in the context of if properly enforced, does the law serve the best interest of the community? And if people are violating that law, it is not a failure of the law, but a failure of the city to enforce it. So that would be two separate issues in my mind. So I think in looking at, do, is the sale of alcohol in Clarkston after two AM a benefit to the city or a detriment to the city? How is that working? That is one consideration. And I did speak to at least one resident, probably I've heard from a couple, is that if there are gross violations of anybody's licenses or laws in Clarkston, then they need to lose their license period, and that's a whole separate issue. But for this, I do want to say that I have spoken to the owner of the Pont Sports Lounge, and he is a long-term resident of Clarkston. He is giving fifteen people of Clarkston jobs, and so I appreciate that. I would want to promote all Clarkston businesses and drive as many customers in there in the daytime as is at all possible, but I do not believe that alcohol sales from two to four, four thirty AM is benefiting the city. It's not doing what we had hoped it would do a couple of years ago when it passed. I wasn't on the council at that time, but I did support it. But I was hoping at that time it would be used in a different way than it is, rather than, they are essentially being used as nightclubs, and that was not the intent. So for, for reasons other than what's listed here, I would support the rollback of the hours and addressing violations of the hours or violations of any Clarkston law to be handled separately.
Any other council comments? Okay. Yes, Councilman.
This Councilman Carroll, so my question is, if we did roll back hours, could they still serve, I understand they can still serve food from two to four if, if they want to, is, is that right?
Roll back the hours, it will be at two. Right.
Well, they.
Right, they would have.
Okay, so I, my, my understanding was the hours that were changing were for alcohol. Is there any reason why they couldn't sell food during those hours?
Well, see, this ordinance, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. Councilwoman, go ahead. The ordinance was created just for late night alcohol sales. So to repeal ordinance nineteen four three three, the, the whole ordinance goes away. And at that time, it goes back to the, for hours, Monday through Thursday, Friday and Saturday, and they're not four AM. It's actually two AM, three AM on Friday and Saturday.
Yeah, I agree with what Councilwoman Johnson said about the alcohol. I think Councilman Carroll was asking, even without al-, so assuming that the hours were rolled back, could they serve food only during those late night times? And I'm not aware of any ordinance that would say they could not.
Yeah, that's correct. The ordinance is only addressed the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises. So that, if this ordinance is repealed, that could only occur Monday through Thursday until one fifty-five AM, Friday and Saturday until two fifty AM, and on Sunday until one fifty-five AM, or Sunday into Monday morning. But it does not address food.
So if there was still like a food order for delivery or for eating at the restaurant for like three thirty, they could still satisfy that if this ordinance was repealed. Am I understanding that correctly?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
Yes, Chair, uh, Chair, I mean, Chief, I'm sorry, Chief, that's.
Just to let y'all know, if you will, if you stop the alcohol sales at the rollback time and you allow them to continue having food, there's no way we're gonna be able to monitor that they're not pouring drinks. I mean, it's just, it's, there's just no way.
So, Mr. Quinn, based on that, and as, if this passes, then are you saying we need to follow up to say that restaurants are to function at a certain hour? Just to make sure, from what I'm hearing with the chief, is that there's no way for them to be able to consistently monitor whether or not they are adhering to the two o'clock and, two o'clock hour?
Right, so I'm not necessarily saying that. I, I feel like I recollect that our regular alcohol ordinance has a provision about closing. And I believe I could.
Yeah.
It does.
Yeah, it says under seven three twenty-nine D that all licensed restaurants must close their premises to the public and clear the premises of patrons within one hour after the time set in this section. So on Monday to Thursday, they can, the consumption on, on premises, the sale is permitted until one fifty-five in the morning. By two fifty-five in the morning, all patrons must be, must leave, and the restaurant must close. That is.
But that's the. All right, go ahead, Mr. Gomez.
No, go ahead.
I was just, okay, um, so in, in essence, that is a closing time that a restaurant rejects itself to by electing to have alcohol for sale on the premises. And that applies to all of our restaurants that sell alcohol. And so the answer, to go all the way back to Councilman Carroll's question, is they would have to cut off one hour after the alcohol cutoff time. They would have to have, not just stop serving food, but have all the patrons out of the building.
Then my other question is, this ordinance restricts sale for consumption on the premises. Understand, we in the state of Georgia have allowed sale for, deliver, for basically either delivery or for people to grab and go. Would they still be able to do that until three AM if somebody orders, you know, a drink to go? Like a sealed container, could they take it, you know, with them after three AM? At three AM, in this case?
No, the, so the, the, the alcohol delivery regulation is that those sales cut off at the same time. Well, the alcohol delivery is for businesses that sell for consumption off premises. And their hours for delivery cut off at the same time as their sale cut off, which is a separate kind of business, a separate provision that I don't have in front of me to tell you the exact time. As far as to go, alcohol, I think the same regulation would apply. They, they don't get, you know, it doesn't give you any extra hours. You'd have to complete the sale and be out of there by the time that the alcohol cut off, not just the time one hour later when the business was required to be empty.
Madam Mayor, I got a question.
Vice, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Thank you. Well, I think, uh, uh, let me see. So I do, I do remember during the height of the pandemic in March or April, we, we made an exception since they were not allowed to sell inside. We did allow them for months or so until the governor repealed it. So I think that's kind of what Councilmember Carroll is asking, I believe. So I guess we could address this at a different time probably, but, um, is there a way we can address it in this context, Mr., Mr. Quinn?
I think it would be mixing of things that we shouldn't mix, honestly. My recommendation would be to either act on this. You know, what's before us is to repeal a specific ordinance. And what the, and that's what we've had on our agenda, and that's what people, you know, were expecting tonight. So what I would recommend is that the council could either act on that or not. But I wouldn't try to combine in the other. Number one, because we haven't really given fair notice to people, and number two, because I feel like we might miss something or have to revisit it again. So I would recommend that we not mix those two issues. We could either defer this particular issue or take a vote on it. And then we can address other alcohol issues in a more informed and considered way next month.
Thank you. I have another question, Madam Mayor. And that is, I do recall that one of the businesses, Pont Sport Lounge, had actually applied for a, a parking, what do they call it?
Valet, the valet parking?
Yeah, valet parking application. And if they could address the noise issue that's coming from patrons' vehicles, that could certainly alleviate the situation with the noise that's coming from the patrons. And, um, I'm just wondering about the status of their application, Mr. Gomez?
I don't ha-, I don't, I'd have to ask him, Ms. Cowie, I've never seen an application for parking or for valet. They don't have the space to do that on, so I don't know what they would request or. I know Shawana, have they submitted any application to you?
They have submitted a request for a valet parking service, but it was the same address as the Pont Sports Lounge. So they would actually need to have a office location to operate a valet service. And of course, to, to let us know where they're going to be parking the cars. So we never received that information. So that, um, application is wrong.
I guess I'm, I'm a little, I'm, I mean, our concern would be where there isn't enough space on the existing Pont Sports Lounge property to park cars for all of their patrons. I know they've been using other properties, and that's been part of the issue with the noise, particularly late at night. So I'm not sure how that would alleviate any of the noise issues. It would appear that it would not. You're still gonna have cars driving to this, this business at different, at, you know, as long as they're open until. So that's not really going to alleviate the potential issue of noise.
Yeah, what I was trying to say is, they would actually take the car from the patron in front of their door or something, and they would park it in their property themselves. And from there, I'm not sure even if they need a license to do that, probably not. So, and then whenever the pa- patron is done, instead of him going to his car and rolling down his windows, they would actually bring it back to him and he would, he would leave.
I mean, I figure L.A. works, but again, it's still not addressing the.
Right, so we're gonna, and thank you for bringing that point up, and that's something that we can follow up, Vice Mayor Yasu. But at, the issue at hand is the late night ordinance, alcohol ordinance. And then at this point, I would like to make sure if there are no other questions, what then is the pleasure of the council?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions, just because our, our discussion has been quite wide in its scope. So I just want to make sure I'm clear that we are only, it sounds like from a practical standpoint, this is only gonna op-, you know, impact operations, you know, of, of the businesses in question by an hour. Still be allowed to, you know, keep the kitchen open, even with the requirement to, to stop serving alcohol. They still have an additional hour where they could be serving food, correct? Is that, am I tracking with this discussion?
They, they were, okay, so if we vote to eliminate the hours and go back to the original hours, they would have to end, for example, at one forty, one fifty-five, and then they'd have an additional hour. So with that additional hour, if they wanted to say the kitchen closes at two thirty, and then anybody else, everybody has to be out by three o'clock, that's it.
Yeah, I'm definitely in agreement that we not wrap too much, you know, additional and, you know, pretty much, we not wrap anything else in this in terms of hours of operation for businesses, just because we, we could not have the time to go and check on what all that would affect. And I, I just wanted to, to make a comment, you know, I think we're not doing to recognize the effort that some businesses have made in complying. I think it sounds like we're just at a point where in spite of our best efforts, we're not able to, to manage some of the additional concerns that have come up. You know, unrelated to operations. And in particular with, with where some of our businesses are located, and it seems like something we could revisit later down the road, perhaps with, you know, more established town center zoning, if the public feels like we are able to maintain a space for, you know, for bars where they can ma-, you know, remain profitable and maintain their operations without impacting other aspects of the community, including, you know, property damage and things like that, disconnected to the additional traffic. So I just wanted to, just that we're not shutting anyone down with this. I don't think that's, you know, what is on the table here. We're rolling one piece of this back just because it, it's not quite a good fit for where we are right now as a city. However, that's not preventing anyone from patronizing any of these establishments for lunch or dinner or anything else, or encouraging their friends to do the same. We do want to encourage entrepreneurship, and we do want to encourage businesses in our community as well. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Perkins. Councilwoman Hopkins, and I had already talked about us doing some local supportive businesses. So maybe we can have a day where we go to the different businesses and make sure we support them to get sales there. So, but what's on the table? to get sales there. So, um, but it, that what's on the table is the hours. So let's deal with what's on the table. So, yes, Councilwoman Hopkins.
Um, I just want to point out that although it says that the, in, in the rollback rules, although it says that the premises will be closed and cleared of patrons within an hour, it says there will be no consumption on the premises after the prohibited hours have been in effect for half an hour. So you cannot just like order your drink at one fifty-five and then sit there for an hour sipping it. All alcohol food needs to be off the table in thirty minutes. So if there's people standing around talking at, you know, two thirty, you don't have to throw them out physically, but there can't be anything left on the table. So people need to be moving towards the door. Essentially, the business is closed after thirty, after the hour.
Yeah, I mean, that's mostly correct, that there shall be no consumption thirty minutes after the sale of alcohol has ended.
Right.
And thirty minutes later or one hour after the end of alcohol sales, then all the patrons need to leave. So you could stay for one hour after the business closes. You must finish your drink within thirty minutes after the, the, the sales have ended.
Right. And, you know, and reviewing our alcohol rules is something for another day. But I just want to say that's what we are rolling back to, which was simply the prior law before this ordinance went into effect.
And again, this is something that we're looking not only for what is great for our community. So, bottom line. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
I have the motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, uh, was that Quinn before we start?
Well, I was, thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just gonna say that, uh, in this particular instance, we don't have an ordinance before us, which is fine because the intent is to repeal an ordinance that's specifically referenced. I would just ask that the motion include an effective date for the repeal. Is it supposed to start tomorrow or in a month, or what does the council desire?
Madam Mayor, I have a question that in.
Councilman Perkins.
Uh, I didn't do it. Um, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so, uh, I think with that in mind, um, I do think it would be good. Um, I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Quinn, so I appreciate it, um, you know, to, you know, to consider it at least a month, possibly, you know, two months, you know, time to sort of allow our businesses to adjust those that, you know, um, aren't directly uncompliant, um, as has been discussed previously. So I'd be, I would definitely be open to, uh, to either of those timelines.
And this is Councilman Carol agree that there probably should be some transition period because the business has been operating with one set of rules for the last four years.
It's been since February of twenty nineteen.
Or two years, I'm sorry, two years. I thought, permission, I thought it was twenty seventeen, but you're right, it's twenty nineteen, two years.
Madam Mayor, may I? Yes.
Uh, well, I don't think, um, I don't think we should give, I'm sorry, can you hear me? I'm sorry. Or I think that if we're going to, um, give them thirty days, that's pretty much rewarding that behavior. If we're gonna repeal an ordinance, we should repeal the ordinance effective immediately. That's just my personal opinion, um, because I don't think you need time to close the doors. I don't understand that part.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Hassan, Councilman Hassan.
I don't, I mean, I don't, I, I don't think that you, you just, you know, issue an, uh, an order of say, I'm repealing you today, you know, we bought, you know, you know, it's a business. It's been there for years and years. It has employees. You just don't do that. You have to give the people, you know, a time, even if you're repealing an ordinance. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So when whoever makes the motion, take that into consideration. But at this time, I would like to have a motion.
Okay. Well, are we gonna come up with, um, a timeframe? Because it doesn't make sense to motion something that somebody's gonna kick down.
So what is comfortable?
Thirty days? Do you guys have a problem with thirty days?
Yes, I have a problem with thirty days.
What, what is your concern?
So how many do you suggest?
Sixty days at least.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Um, I think that our reason for rolling this back is because it's negatively impacting the community around. So I think the longer that we extend it, the more we're continuing to negatively impact the community around it. I think the sooner that we roll it back, because we are just talking about an hour or two late at night, um, the sooner we let the people in that community go back to sleep. I, I don't think, if, if it were not having a negative impact on the community, we wouldn't even be having this conversation. So I think we need to, um, put that first. Um, not, not more than thirty days, absolutely.
Why not thirty days? Councilman Perkins?
Uh, Councilman Hassan, uh, can you elaborate on your rationale for, for having a sixty-day buffer on that?
Yes. I think when I'm do, you know, somebody's been doing business so long and the city decided to roll back the ordinance, they should, they have the right, I mean, not the right, but they, they deserve a time. Thirty days is too small for them. I mean, their customers, you know, they have a lot of customers probably coming outside the city. They should let them know that, that we're not gonna be, you know, staying, you know, late hours from such and such a time. So by giving them sixty days, you know, they would be able to make some change and adapt to it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Ha, I mean, Councilwoman Johnson.
Okay, well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Basically, when they originated the business, the, the ordinance that we're going to, section three dash twenty-nine, that's what they initial, this was a bonus. This ordinance was something that was tried and we tried it and it didn't work. So, um, I think it's fair to say thirty days would be sufficient. We do not, I, if that's the case, sixty days is two whole months for two hours, late hours. So I, I can do the thirty days. I, I'm, for the thirty days, I just don't see the sixty days. Thank you.
Ma, Madam?
Thank you. Yeah, Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank you. I think I, I'm not really, um, uh, trying to speak about the, the duration. I feel, um, giving them time is reasonable to transition. However, in the meantime, regardless whether it is sixty days or thirty days or one day, um, I am with the understanding that, uh, they're gonna have to still abide with everything, with all the, um, with all the ordinances that we have. And, um, uh, so I, I think, um, I, I, I'm really, I, I just believe if they violate anything else, they definitely gonna have to, uh, to, uh, to get cited or they have to, if they violate anything, any of our ordinance regardless. So I, I'm not sure, um, I think giving them time is reasonable. Uh, but, uh, I don't, I, I really don't believe that, um, the correlation between the duration and that, that, that they would violate the, the ordinance. So I don't see the correlation in this. So we need to, uh, definitely, uh, be in consideration and giving them enough time to adjust. But at the same time, that doesn't mean that, uh, uh, that, that, it doesn't mean that they're gonna have a, uh, free right to do whatever they want to do in that time. So, uh, they still gonna have to abide by everything, by all our ordinances, regardless of how long it is.
So.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
That's a point.
Councilman Perkins?
Point of, point of word, uh, I would just like to remind everyone, um, in the comments that, that your comments are a part of public record. Um, and so if you're, uh, making statements, this goes for everyone, um, just, just be careful of the way that you phrase things, um, especially, uh, making threats in any right, uh, direction. I think, um, we all understand this is a very tense issue we're discussing. Um, but I, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that they are, um, on record in this discussion. So, uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would, I would encourage to proceed and request a motion at this, please.
Yes, so I will entertain a motion at this time.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Johnson.
I move to repeal ordinance nineteen dash four-three-three effective August first.
Second. It's been properly moved and second that we repeal ordinance nineteen dash four-three-three effective August first. Is there any more discussion?
I, I just have, I just have a question before we go to the, ready to go to the question. For Councilman Hassan, I know you said sixty, and I think that, you know, count, that Vice Mayor O'Shea also said sixty would forty-five be sufficient, or do you think, I mean, is there a compromise here or is it sixty or thirty?
That was the compromise, the thirty days. It was a little over thirty days, actually.
Yeah. We have a motion.
Motion's on the floor right now, so.
We, we can amend the motion.
If you want to, but right now, if, if in this discussion phase, are we gonna move forward with any other discussion? Okay, are you ready for the question? All in favor of appealing nineteen dash four-three-three and making it effective August first, say aye. And I'm gonna go in order. Councilwoman Hopkins?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carol?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Perkins?
Aye.
Councilman Hassan?
Abstain.
Okay, and Councilman, um, Vice Mayor Yasu?
Abstain.
Okay, so we have, wait, let me, let me go back through that one again. So we.
Three ayes, one nay, two abstains.
Two abstentions, so motion pass. And we'll move on to the next item. Okay, thank you all for that discussion, and we have the effective date of August first. The next item on the agenda is adopt resolution authorizing, among other things, the issuance and sale of a tax anticipation note in the principal amount of five hundred thousand. Mr. Gomez?
This item, again, as we discussed last week, is the issue in the sale of a tax anticipation note, principal amount of five hundred thousand dollars. As we have stated in the last few, well, many years, even prior to my arrival, we received the majority of our revenue toward the end of the year. This is to keep us solvent, uh, mainly through the months of August and September. We began receiving, uh, our property tax and, and other larger revenues, such as our insurance premium, eventually our franchise, electric franchise fee revenue toward the end of the year, October, November, December, and even into January of the following year. We have solicited and received the quotes for the tax anticipation note with an interest rate of two point zero nine percent. As long as we close by July the fifteenth, the tan or tax anticipation note tan would be due, the principal and the interest on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Our interest would total approximately a little over four thousand eight hundred dollars. We are also would, uh, compensate the bond attorney for this tax anticipation note in the amount of five thousand dollars. So the total cost to the city, uh, just a little bit over nine thousand eight hundred dollars for this five hundred thousand dollars tax anticipation note. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gomez on this item?
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion at this time. Yeah, Councilwoman Johnson?
I need to see it, Mr. Gomez. Can you take it up a little bit? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the resolution author, authorizing, among other things, the insurance and sale of a tax anticipation note in the principal amount of fifty thousand dollars.
I think it's five hundred thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, five hundred thousand. That is correct.
There's second.
Second.
It's been properly moved to the council adopt a resolution authorizing, among other things, the issuance and sales of a tax anticipation note in the principal amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of this motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion pass. We'll move on to the next item, which is repeal mask mandate ordinance, and that's Councilman Carol, and that is G-ten.
Yes, so this, uh, we put this ordinance into place, uh, at a time when, uh, there was no vaccine and that there are several, there, DeKalb County and most other DeKalb cities also had their own mask ordinances. Uh, at this time, the vaccine's been publicly available, uh, for the last three months or so. And every DeKalb city and DeKalb County itself has repealed the mask mandate ordinances. So Clarkson's the only county that remains with a mask mandate. And realistically, just going to Clarkson businesses and, you know, talking to Chief Hudson, I think it's not able to be enforced at this time. Um, and so my recommendation is to repeal it, uh, and just leave it as a, repeal it as to private businesses and leave it as a recommendation that if you're not vaccinated, you continue to mask when you're indoors and still require masking in, in public, in the, in the public buildings. For example, if you have a court date, you would still be required to be masked. If you go to the city for some business, you're still required to be masked because a lot of times participation in city business is not optional. You have to appear for a court or something like that. So in, in that case, I think requiring masks is still appropriate. But I think we're at the stage where we can repeal it and just leave it as a recommendation for, uh, private businesses and outdoor spaces.
Any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mary Yasu?
Um, I definitely believe that we have to repeal it. Um, uh, and first though, I think, um, we need to, uh, remove the, the fine as well if we're gonna, uh, if we, even if we're gonna adopt it for, um, for, uh, within the city buildings, uh, if somebody doesn't obey, instead of fining them, they definitely need to be removed from, uh, from whatever they're trying to do. Um, but, uh, I think we need to remove the fines of twenty-five dollars or something. And, um, the other thing is I just wanna ask our, uh, police chief, uh, how many people ever got cited or violating this ordinance?
We did not cite anyone.
Yes, that's correct. We've not cited, not one citation.
But does that mean everybody's been abided?
Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, we, we were not, this is something that we're just not going to cite somebody for not having a mask. We have not, nor will we going forward. It's just not worth it that a person was killed within the last month, not far from here. So again, we just have not enforced it, nor will we enforce it. There are thousands of ordinances and laws throughout the country, throughout the world, that have a monetary penalty but are just not enforced. This is another example of one of those ordinances and laws.
So Councilman Carol, yeah, so Councilman Carol? Yes, Vice Mary Yasu? What was your next point?
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm really glad that, uh, nobody was ever cited. Uh, I, I, I always believed that this was not practical to, to put violate, I mean, to citation on it. And I always wanted to be, uh, an advisory, and still I believe we need to keep it advi, advisory. Um, and even if we have a hundred percent vaccination rate, I think there are, there is always gonna be qu, quite a few people who might not get vaccinated for whole different reasons. It could be, uh, they might be for, for whole medical reasons, maybe, I don't know. But I'm just, even if young kids are not gonna be able to be vaccinated yet under twelve, so. um, the best thing would be just to put the, the mandate without fines for city, uh, events and city, uh, especially city indoor, city, um, uh, city council meetings and all government buildings within the city. Uh, because we need to be cognizant of people who might not be able to get vaccinated for different reasons.
Thank you, Vice Mary Yasu. And just as a point of clarification, Councilman Carol, you were saying that you are repealing that ordinance four six four, but in your, um, substitution, you're simply saying just to make sure that you have people masked in public, correct? Without any penalty.
In public buildings, in public buildings. So like, they, you know, if they, if they have to go, you have a citation hearing, I think it's reasonable to acquire masks there because that's not really optional for people to go. Whereas you can choose to not go into a store if you don't feel comfortable, you know, with other people being masked there. We can't choose whether or not to appear for a citation hearing.
So I just wanted to make sure that it's clear that, uh, Councilman Carol's, uh, resolution is not including a, a fine at all.
I mean, yeah, you know, I leave it up to kind of discretion whether or not the fine or removal is appropriate or remedy if someone just absolutely refuses to wear a mask in a public building. Um, you know, at a citation hearing or something like that. I mean, one thing I kind of thought about is, you know, if you have a citation and you just show up and refuse to wear a mask, does that mean you can never be heard in your citation, or? You know, I'm not sure how that would work exactly. So that's what, that's a situation where I think, you know, I don't know if a fine or removal would be more appropriate because I don't want someone to use this as like a loophole to get out of, ever having their case heard or something like that.
Mr. Quinn, how would we address that situation?
Yeah, that's a little bit of a sticky wicked. I mean, kind of a, um, place where various rights swam into each other, right? I mean, the defendant has a right to be a party to his proceeding. Um, the court has a right to control the conduct of the individuals before it. Council has a right to regulate the use of its public buildings and a right to compel people to be there. Um, but the Supreme Court has said that for court functions, you know, basically people couldn't be compelled during this pandemic, and now that's, but that's been rolled back now. Um, that's a really hard one to answer, I'm afraid. I think that the ordinance here, you know, I don't, I'm afraid I'm a bit stumped on the spot here. I, I think the answer has to be, um, repeal, if, if the council is determined that masks are no longer necessary for a public health reason, um, as far as private property, then repeal that and, and leave it at that and let the uh, court set its rules, um, for participating. You know, I, I don't remember a, that our, I don't think our ordinance specifically addressed that. So by repealing the ordinance, we would not be changing it unless I'm overlooking something.
Let me ask you a question to your, to this point. I know that Governor Kemp is removing the state of emergency, health emergen- emergency for the state of Georgia, July first. So with that being said, um, and since there is an emergency, it's really us just saying how we wanna manage, how we deal with public places. Um, what then in terms of that recommendation would you say for us?
Well, I mean, I don't wanna make a recommendation as far as the public health thing because that's not my expertise. But you're right, that the governor has taken away the state emergency effective July first. One impact of that, i- i- you know, according to the governor, we never had any authority to do anything about this anyway. And so that's an additional level of gray area. Um, you know, I'm, I gave the legal opinion that we did, and that he was claiming in a more authority than he had. Um, so, but I'll, I'll say this for sure. If there's no state emergency and there's no city emergency, then there's no justification for requiring the masks. Think you have to go one way or the other on that. If we want to say that in Clarkson, there is an emergency, no matter what the governor says, and we're gonna require it, then I can make an argument that we have the authority to do that. Uh, and so far, the governors never came and challenged us. But if we determine that there is no emergency, I think the thing to do, honestly, you know, I'm not saying whether there is or is not, but if we determine it's not needed somewhere in the city, I, I, I would honestly recommend just pulling it all off. Uh, and one consequence is that is that we have to return to in-person, um, council meetings. Because without the emergency under the state law as it is amended, there needs to be a declared emergency either locally, at the county level, or at the state level to allow remote meetings. And so if the council wants to make a decision that there is no emergency, then, um, we'll have to have a quorum present to conduct business.
And then, I guess I have one other question for the city staff. Do you feel more comfortable with just lifting the mandate entirely, or do you feel more comfortable with still requiring public, you know, wear, wear masks inside city buildings? Obviously, the city staff would be somewhat affected by this one or the other.
Regardless of what happens, we're still going to encourage people to wear masks. We will make them available, but we're not going to enforce that they must wear one when they come into a city building. But I will certainly continue to encourage everyone to wear one, and a lot of our city staff will continue to wear one. I'm going to, likely they will continue to wear them for several months, as I will.
Well, if it's not gonna be enforced, then we might as well repeal it unless.
I have, I have a concern here. Madam Mayor. I can't hear you, Madam Mayor. Okay, okay. Um, well, I think when, uh, Councilman Carol mentioned, like, we cannot compel someone to go to the pub or to a restaurant, but we can compel them to go to court. I think we have to be very mindful of this, the fact that although the, um, occurrence of COVID is going down in DeKalb County, um, there's three small areas, including Clarkson, where it's actually going on. And, um, so we, we are far from being out of hot water now, and although, um, I mean, I feel good, I'm vaccinated, we still have an increased number of people being hospitalized and dying. And here is the big difference. It is literally over ninety-nine percent of the new cases and over ninety-nine percent of the people dying from COVID right now are unvaccinated. So the vaccine makes all of the difference in the world, and of course, we are not going to require people to show their vaccine cards or go around checking vaccines. There are people who, for other health reasons, are not able to get the vaccine. And if we are compelling people to go to court, if other people are in that courtroom without masks, of course, those masks are not for their own benefit, but for the benefit of the other people in the courtroom. It's for all of the people you are exhaling on. So I feel like, um, although I don't feel it should be required, um, in, uh, restaurants or places where it is optional because people can use their own judgment. You go into stores all the time and say, our unvax, our vaccinated customers are free to shop uh, without a mask. I think I would still recommend masks for unvaccinated people and, um, require them in the court anywhere where we are gonna compel someone to be because I just don't think it's fair to require someone to risk their life to pay a traffic ticket.
Thank you for that comment. To that point, we can address, for example, how we deal with this ordinance, but then we can follow up in terms of how many people we allow in the courtroom at one, at a given time. All of those things can be a separate discussion outside of what we're gonna do in terms of handling this piece. So it sounds like we can repeal this and then encourage people to wear their mask. And if it becomes a situation where we see that we need to readdress it, then we can bring it back and put it on the agenda. And Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I wonder if the council would consider, um, rolling back this ordinance, but then, um, I don't even know if we need a resolution or an ordinance resolution to this, but also um, putting it in the hands of our city staff in court to set their own policy, um, in terms of, uh, requirements in the courtroom or in other uh, public spaces, um, related to the operations of the city.
So, Mr. Gomez, um, if we just go ahead and repeal it, you already set in, in a policy in terms of the number of people and everything else. Is that correct? For court.
You mean the number of people in?
The chambers, in the buildings.
Oh, right. I mean, we, yeah, they'll be limited so that people still distance, yes.
And then, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Gomez. And then, Mr. Quinn, I just wanted to be clear. My audio is, it was cutting in and out. Um, are, are we at risk of, of not being able to maintain virtual meetings, um, if, if we aren't under some sort of city-level state of emergency? Did I understand that correctly?
Yes, you understood that correctly. We have to, we have to maintain the state of emergency or have a quorum of individuals attend in person to do business. Um, the, the state law allows each member to attend remotely twice per year without any excuse, so to speak, and additionally, as needed with like a doctor's note. Uh, and it's not necessarily a COVID law, but it, obviously, that's the implication. Um, and so if we remove our emergency, then at this meeting, then this will be our last meeting that is, uh, attended by less than a quorum in person.
Okay. And, and, uh, if I may, then to, to that point, um, uh, would it be advisable for us, and, and I'm, you know, I know there's, there's sort of a desire to be able to move back in person, just in terms of accessibility to, to certain members of the community, but I, I think a counterargument is creating space for, uh, members of the public and as well, you know, members of council who, uh, you know, might be, you know, at risk or, or, you know, concerned about the vaccine. Uh, would it be advisable for us to, you know, as we rescind the ordinance, also, you know, amend it to maintain a state of emergency? And just to be able to maintain operations as is, I think that could be a good compromise to this.
So.
Uh, I see the appeal of that as a compromised position. On the other hand, I find it to be sort of a uh, what's the expression? Uh, halfway pregnant? I mean, it just seems like there either is or is not an emergency. And if there is, then it needs to be addressed by taking appropriate precautions, but if there's not, then the state law is telling us how we have to handle the meetings. Uh, a- and so I, I, I wouldn't, you know, like I said, I see the appeal of that as, as a down-the-middle route, but I'm not sure that that would hold up, um, to, to scrutiny.
Councilman Perkins, one of the other pieces is that, that we also said by the August meeting, we were gonna try to at least do in-person. So we're on schedule with that. The good, I guess is one way to look at it is that we're having this meeting now on, before July first, so, um, it didn't impact us in terms of the, uh, the, the lift from the stay being removed. So that was kind of a good thing that kind of helped us out in this whole process. So just keep that in mind is that, um, from the plans we'd had already talked about, the August meeting was probably going to be that meeting that we were gonna start having in-person meetings based on the schedule. So Vice Mary Yasu, Vice Mary Yasu.
Thank, thank you. So I, I'm, I'm getting a little bit confused here. So, uh, I think the, the emergency, uh, that the city declared, is that what we're talking about, what the state has declared? I just want to clarify, Mr. Quinn.
Well, I think we've talked about each of those two a little bit. Um, I, the state emergency was declared and then steadily rolled back to the point where I believe it's set to totally expire in a few days. The city emergency was declared and has never been rolled back.
Okay, so I think it seems like we need to roll it back, I guess. I'm not sure how we can do it. Maybe we can have a special call meeting. Uh, but, um, in the meantime, so even July, uh, work session is definitely gonna have to be in person, I guess, then.
That was kind of the schedule, at least, for us to try to work towards.
Yeah, but August, that's what we say, August council meeting, but we're forgetting about the July twenty-seven work session, or twenty-eight.
No, we're not forgetting it. That's part of the whole thing with the work session in the meeting.
Okay.
Right, the work session is on July the twenty-sixth, excuse me, the twenty-seventh.
That's gonna be in person, I guess.
If we're required by state code, yes.
Okay, uh, and can we still have a, a mix, um, uh, mess, uh, m- meeting, uh, Mr. Quinn, can we continue, uh, um, having Zoom available for anybody, uh, who is not able to attend in person? And, uh, uh, that, if we can make, can we make that also available for city council members?
Absolutely. So I think that we can do that. Uh, the federal funds will pay for that. I don't usually make a policy recommendation, but I think it would be a good idea to do that because I've heard from people, not just Clarkson folks, but with my other city, that there are people out there, maybe they have disabilities, maybe they have, uh, scheduling conflicts that have been attending meetings by Zoom, and whereas they never attended or could not attend meetings in person. So I, I think there's a couple of different things, uh, to address your question. Yes, that can be done, and that's what folks have been calling a hybrid meeting. A hybrid meeting has a quorum in person and is available to those who want to join by Zoom. Now, for the residents or the interested parties, there's no law that im- impacts them, right? They're not part of the quorum. They can attend every time by Zoom, or they can attend never, or they can come one time in person, one time by Zoom, whatever. Now, for the elected officials, there is a law that applies. So if we go to a hybrid model, that would very much facilitate remote participation for elected officials. And the, what the law says is that twice per calendar year, you can take that option, uh, without any explanation or excuse. So it might be that you're on vacation, or that you're just not feeling well, or you had to work late, et cetera. Twice per year, no questions asked. Now, if you wanna do that a third, fourth, fifth time per year, you're supposed to present a doctor's note or a, uh, I can't remember exactly how it's phrased, but I guess you can think of it sort of like if you don't show up to work and you need to prove to your boss why you didn't come, that you would need to present that kind of information to the city council, your fellow members, as far as why you're not coming for the third or additional time in person that year.
I just have a follow-up question with that, but I, I'm not sure if we have always followed this because I know there are some council members who could not, who missed more than two meetings, which means they were not even available remotely, so I'm kind of. So I'm kind of confused why, why the state law doesn't address that. I mean, it does, it kind of addresses, like you're saying, how many meetings you can attend, but it doesn't say anything about how many meetings you can miss.
Well, oh, you mean just plain missing it outright?
Yeah.
Not participating at all? So the state law does not govern that, but our charter does. And I hesitate to throw a number out there because I don't have it in front of me, but I feel like it says if you miss three in a row, then the council can basically vote to remove you from office. But that's a separate issue.
Right.
Because the thing about remote attendance is that you get to vote and you are participating. And that's what the open meetings law addresses. You're just not there, then you're just not a part of the quorum. And, and that's what the state law would consider just kind of a personal issue. You know, you're accountable to the voters if you don't show up. And cities have their own charters that tend to address that issue. Does, does that make sense?
It actually makes sense. I think since we have six, well, we could see, I, I'm not sure. We could always talk with each other and rotate among ourselves and try to make sure we maintain that three days requirement. So we'll work on that.
Right. So to that point, that would be a separate discussion. But what we have right now is what are we gonna do with this mask? Yes, Vice Mayor, I mean, Councilwoman Hopkins.
I would recommend, considering that our COVID cases are going up, and I know for a fact there are two people who are on the city council who are not vaccinated. At least there may be others, I don't know, everybody's health history. But I think rather than repeal the mask ordinance, that we just roll it back on private businesses and let private businesses choose to regulate themselves. Because it's, I don't want to send the message that we're post-pandemic and everything's safe now and we can all go back to live everything and no masks. Because that's not at all the case. And it's not like it's an emergency or it's not. It's an emergency for some people. And they may or may not have any control over that. Not everyone has a choice about whether or not they're able to get the vaccine. So I think we should, if anywhere where we are, have to be there in the courtroom, council members for the council, that there should be a mask mandate for everybody in that room, for public buildings. And let restaurants, businesses do what they feel is best. And if their customers don't feel safe in there, they can leave. But to mandate somebody go in when the pandemic is still, people are dying every day. And when the infection rate is going up in Clarkson, I think is not responsible.
So at this time, I will entertain a motion for however you want to address this.
May I make a motion to roll back the mask mandate to apply only to public buildings? And to make the recommendation for private businesses, for people to wear masks inside, but that would be a recommendation only. The mandate would only apply to public buildings. City Hall courtroom.
Properly moved and seconded that we repeal this ma- the mask ordinance and that, I was trying to, that we roll back the mask mandate to apply only to public buildings and to make the recommendation for private businesses for people to wear masks inside. But that would be a recommendation only.
Right. The mandate is just for public buildings.
Any other discussion? Are you ready for the question?
I've got a question.
Yes, Vice Mary Yasu.
So is there any fine on this?
I think there's a twenty-five dollar fine in the ordinance, but we've heard that no one's ever been cited.
So with the proposal, though, is there, is there gonna be a fine?
If you are gonna walk into a courtroom in violation of the city law, whose courtroom it is, you're probably jeopardizing a lot more than twenty-five dollars, to be honest with you.
I agree, but that.
And Councilwoman Hopkins, let's stop.
Okay.
Mr. Quinn, if we roll back this ordinance or repeal this ordinance, then if all we are saying is that we are recommending that people wear masks indoors and that they do it in public buildings, then that's not saying anything about putting a fine associated with this motion, correct?
So the fine is associated with the existing mask ordinance? Twenty-five dollars. What I heard as a motion is to basically reduce the scope of applicability of that ordinance from all public, all places that admit the public to only places that are owned by the city of Clarkston. And so to me, that motion didn't change anything about the fine. Although by reducing the scope enormously, it would lessen the threat or the incidences where a person might become fined.
So in order to address the issue about the fine, then we'd need to amend the motion, is that correct?
Right. I mean, I, yes, a different motion would be remove the requirement from private businesses that are open to the public and remove the fine entirely, which then begs the question, what is the, how would it be enforced?
I mean, Councilman, I would just say that since no one has been fined, it's obvious from hearing the staff that there was going to be fined. I think it's somewhat of an academic discussion. So I don't really think it makes that much of a difference either way.
I think that to enforce it in either a city council meeting or a courtroom where somebody's refusing to wear a mask and not endangering their own life, but other people who might be required there, that then they would have to be removed from the building.
I just want to add to that. The reason I'm, I'm saying that is because I, I, I'm in agreement with the encouragement, encouraging people and making it an advisory. However, still as a matter of principle, since it's never been anyway, there is no, nobody ever been fined. So a- again, we are also saying that our staff will have policies as well, which they will follow. This probably most likely will be applied to only city council meeting, which we would also be considered as a city function. So we would have our police officer stationed there that will make sure that people are wearing masks. And if not, I mean, I guess they, they will have to watch it on Zoom. Since we're gonna make it available on Zoom, if they don't want to wear masks, they could just participate on Zoom. And that way, they could still be part of the discussion. So I think there is no point on adding a fine. So I would strongly encourage my colleagues to remove the fine and just adopt this for, for in- indoor city buildings.
There's a motion on the floor. And it's been seconded. So unless I hear an amendment, we're gonna move with the motion that we have. Is there any changes to the motion?
Motion that I made? Yeah, no changes.
Ready for a question? All those in favor to roll back the mask mandate to apply only to public buildings and to make the recommendation for private businesses, for people to wear masks inside, but that would be a recommendation only and the mandate would only apply to public buildings, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I have say.
One abstention. So the motion has passed. Okay. So now we'll move on to item G eleven, which is consider adding a new S A C or Standing Advisory Committee for Business and Economic Development Committee. Say c again, Councilman Perkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I emailed the council the recommended updates from our work session, which was to, instead of creating a new committee, modify two of our existing committees to, to refocus their, their missions and include the, the purpose for the Business and Economic Development Committee underneath marketing and civic engagement. And so the, hold on a second. In here. And so the, the proposed changes would be to change the Community Development Committee to become the Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee. And so it's focused on Clarkston residents. So it would cover matters pertaining to the planning functions of the city, comprehensive development plans and land use plans, health, education, welfare of citizens, community service activities and cultural affairs. In addition, matters pertaining to civic engagement with the goal of attracting and welcoming residents to the city and developing new approaches to engage with residents in the community, growing the overall role of civic entrepreneurship in the city. And then the changes to the, what is currently known as the Market and Civic Innovation Committee, we would change the name of the committee to Business, Marketing and Economic Innovation instead of Development Committee. And it would involve matters pertaining to the city's marketing, businesses and entrepreneurs. This includes evaluating, developing approaches to engage with business owners in the city, encouraging healthy relationships between businesses and residents, proposing improvements to policy and processes that impact businesses and promoting the city in a positive light. Additionally, additionally, planning and organizing events that improve the well-being of businesses and foster innovation as well as issues related to consumer affairs. And so that's the proposed changes. I think, you know, we discussed it outlink in the work session. I'm happy to entertain any more discussion if we need to as well. And then unless I'm mistaken, I believe I discussed with Councilwoman Johnson. She's okay with me taking over as chair of this modified committee. But I'm open to any further thoughts or questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So who, who, who's gonna be chairs, chair of which committees? I just want to make sure I'm clear.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Deborah. Councilwoman Johnson.
Madam Mayor, I, I'm gonna remain chair of the Community Development Committee. And Mark is going to chair the Business and Economic Development Committee.
So are you gonna co-chair that one? Because I know.
No, no ma'am.
No, 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 no. The, the business one, because that one was, the, what it was before was Councilman Hassan was the chair. And so every council member is either a chair or a co-chair for one of the six committees. So are we changing that now? I just want to make sure.
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. So that's something you would have to talk to Hassan. I was just a member of that committee. I wasn't the chair of that one.
I think it, it's, the way it looks, you know, the two committees are adding up together. Is that Mark? Are you adding up? Are you adding up two committees or are you? Yeah.
We're, we're modifying existing ones. Mr. Gomez, do you have the, the copy of the, the language change that I, I emailed you earlier to pull up on the screen?
Mr. Gomez?
I think he's trying to pull it up now.
Okay.
So, so the only other piece is, again, and let me make sure, Councilman Perkins. We have, we, we're gonna bring the DDA back. And then we have our economic department. So how, with what you're doing on your committee, is that going to, in terms of policies and processes, that's part of the economic developments, department's responsibility? How, just kind of make sure I'm clear as far as how is all of that going to work together?
So this, this is the first time hearing of the Economic Development Department. In terms of the DDA, I don't believe it crosses over into the scope of the DDA. Your typical out-of-the-box DDA is gonna handle more land purchases, you know, things in terms of actually financing, acquiring property, things like that. And this is more looking at improving and relationships and sustaining good relationships of businesses in the city. So I don't think, you know, we're not gonna be purchasing property with, you know, with a committee, there wouldn't be anything like that. It was just a gap between the committees in terms of engaging our local business owners. And so that's where, you know, per the discussion in the work session, I sort of made, made the changes to that.
So why I'm just making sure I bring these points up is that Ms. Cowie has two titles. She is responsible for planning and zoning, but also economic development. She's responsible for coordinating all of those things and working with the businesses. And part of one of the things as a council, we also said was that we would also allow her to have another person to help with that department as well. So that's why I'm just trying to make sure in terms of what her role is versus what this committee is doing versus all the players involved. And so that's why I'm just bringing those points up.
I don't care, I've got a question.
So I'm gonna let Councilman Perkins answer that, and then you can answer that, you ask your question, Vice Mary Yasu.
I'm happy to yield to Councilman Yasu. I'm not totally sure I understand the question, but.
Well, yes, Councilmember Perkins, I am actually curious as what Councilman Hassan thinks, because he was the chair of that committee that we are eliminating right now. And if he's okay with it, I, it's all right. But what do you think, Councilmember Hassan? Is that okay or do you want to be also in that committee?
I have no problem with that, you know. Because it seems to be that they're gonna be the same function, so I have no objection for that.
Yeah, we're modi- and, and just to clarify, Councilman Yasu, we're, it's, we're modifying the existing committee. It's not eliminating one and creating another. It's, it's changing the language and, and focusing around something else. Yeah.
But, but if I'm not, if I understood it though, so Ahmed is not gonna be the chair anymore. So I'm just curious if he's okay with that and if he wants to stay in that committee as well. I'm just curious to check here how he feels about it.
I can stay, but you, you know, I, you know, that's fine with me, Mark, with chair and Deborah, that's, you know, I'll work with them, so.
That's why I said, and that's why I said for, at least for that committee, to at least make it where you're co-chair. Because we have several committees. Okay, that's fine. Then we're good with that. So that's number one. Number two, Ms. Cowie, would you please get on the line? Ms. Cowie?
Yes, Madam.
Thank you. Can you tell us what your department is responsible for doing?
My, my department is responsible for the planning, zoning, economic development, permitting, plan review process and business licenses for the city of Clarkston.
I guess mayor and councils, there's a, I mean, a question we can discuss probably at another time. But we have a Planning and Economic Development Department, as you just heard. but we have a planning and economic development department, as you just heard. Um, and of course, we, we promote economic development. We communicate with businesses. We outreach to potential new businesses. I mean, we're constantly doing that, you know, economic development promotion and activities. We are very small, so space is somewhat limited as to what we can do. I mean, obviously, it'd be a little, I mean, there's nothing that we cannot go after, but we do have limitations as to what we can do, uh, certainly both geographic, physical, um, and certainly staff-wise, but, uh, that's what I'm trying to understand. And I put up on the screen the document that Councilman Perkins sent earlier, but it seems like we're getting a little bit beyond what the scope is, but I'll defer back to all of you.
Yeah, and I, I think, uh, Madam Mayor, if I may, um, okay, just wanna make sure I'm following the rules. Uh, no, and I, I think, you know, as, as Ms. Cowie mentioned, you know, her, the scope of our department's role also covers, you know, comp plans and things like that. We also have a community that has another purview. I don't view this as replacing a department, but as Mr. Gomez, um, mentioned, and as I think the role of our advisory committees, you know, are, are put in place, it's not that we don't have incredibly capable staff or existing departments, but I think we all recognize we're a city of twelve thousand people, and it is a lot, um, unless we are willing to, uh, give, uh, give a little more of our budget to hiring a handful of extra folks, which I'm more than happy to discuss. Um, and I think this is potentially, you know, is also a resource to, you know, to our staff as well. Not, that, no, the purpose of these committees isn't to just, you know, start dumping new, you know, requirements on them and saying, are, you know, all right, you know, uh, here's a new list of to-do things to add to our already full schedule, but to, um, be able to, to assist and, and continue to cultivate a relationship with our existing businesses as well, um, collaborating with our staff. So I did want to clarify that.
And to, to your point, Councilman Perkins, I wasn't saying anything against your committee. I'm just trying to make sure that you know from, we have that department, so that all of that's clear. Um, so there's nothing against the committee. I don't, I don't want you to think that, that at all. But I just wanted to make sure that we also knew that there is an economic development department, um, and then that we would be from an advisory perspective, as you're saying, um, to support them. But they already do all the policies and things like that, and we can give them recommendations, as you stated. That's it.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so sounds like, uh, Councilwoman Hassan and Perkins will be, uh, co-chairs. Um, Council, Councilwoman Johnson will remain the chair for her department. Um, you made modifications to it. I think I'm already on that committee as part of that. Um, who else is on that committee with you now, the original marketing committee?
Oh, nobody for marketing. For marketing, it was just me and this, uh, me and Hassan. And then Mark is on it. So it's me, you, and Awet on community development.
I'm on the marketing one.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. That is now the businessman. So, so, okay, so we'll entertain a motion at this time.
On the screen. I move that we rename the marketing committee to be the Business and Economic Development Committee, and appoint Councilman Mark Perkins and Councilman Madison as the co-chairs.
Is there a second? What, did you, did you make sure you renamed both the committees, because both committees changed?
I thought the other one stayed to be community.
So they added the Civic Innovation Committee to it?
Okay, I can redo the motion. I move that we rename marketing maybe the Business Economic Development Stand- Standing Advisory Committee, and appoint Councilman Mark Perkins and Councilman Madison as the co-chairs, and add community, and add the civic advisory to the other community, uh, committee.
So the motion is that we rename the marketing committee to the, to be the Business Marketing and Economic Innovation Committee, and Councilman Perkins and Councilman Hassan will be co-chairs, and we rename the Community Development to be Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee. Is there a second?
Yes, second.
Properly moved and seconded that we rename the marketing company, marketing committee to be the Business Marketing and, and Economic Innovation Committee, and that we add to the Community Development to be Community Development and Civic Innovation Committee, and that for the Business Marketing and Economic Innovation Committee, Councilman Perkins and Councilman Hassan will be co-chairs. Is there any other discussion? You ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion pass. Thank you. Okay, so then we will move on to item G twelve, which is to consider an alcohol package application for Fresh Food Town LLC, forty-six oh four East Posta Leon Avenue. Mr. Patel. And we'll have Mr. Gomez to address this one.
As we discussed last week, the city staff reviewed the application from Fresh Food Town. They have met all the requirements. We are recommending the council approve their license to sell beer, wine, and/or malt beverage for retail package sales at the grocery store located at four six zero four East Pont St. Leon.
Question from the council on this item? And I, is Ms. Patel, Mr. Patel on the phone? I don't, I don't hear him. So with that being said, council, do you have any additional discussion? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I have a motion?
Yes.
Uh, I move that we approve the alcohol package application for Fresh Food Town LLC, located at four six zero four East Pont St. Leon Avenue.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
I'm second, sorry.
It's been properly moved and seconded that, um, and Councilman Carol made that second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the alcohol package application for Fresh Food Town LLC at forty-six oh four East Pont St. Leon. Are you ready for the, is there any discussion? Are you ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion pass.
Thank you.
We have one abstention. Thank you. So duly noted, and that was Council, Vice Mayor, was that Vice Mayor Yasu or, or Councilman Hassan? Councilman Hassan, okay, thank you. Want to make sure we noted that.
Me too, by the way.
Okay, so we have two abstentions and four yes votes. Thank you. Moving right along, G thirteen, Council to recommend city website redesign firm. Mr. Gomez.
So the council heard from the three firms that city staff selected as finalists, Civic Engage, Munich Code, VC Three. Uh, realistically, all three of them, uh, I think can perform very well and give us a, a new website that I think the public would be, and, and certainly city staff, and the council would be extremely pleased, uh, with whatever recommendations the council have. We will proceed with your recommendation.
Council, did you have any comments at this time regarding this agenda item? Councilman Perkins?
I hadn't actually recognized, but was that obvious?
Yes, it was.
I was just wondering, uh, do we have any of the firms on, on the line with us? Or are they, uh, I don't see anyone on here that was.
I don't think so.
Okay, I did have a couple, uh, additional questions for them, but, um, so I, um, you know, if we, if we're full, there needs to be, you know, a little more, uh, research on this. Um, I'm happy to consider it. Um, I did review the applications and look at a bunch of the different design concepts and the pricing, uh, models, and, um, y- you know, I, I reflected on a little bit more today. Um, and I, I really would recommend this, consider going with VC Three on this. Um, they're sort of in the middle tier in terms of the pricing, um, but they also include a website redesign in about four years, which is pretty standard for, you know, uh, kind of reevaluating things. I did have a couple of additional questions for them on, on how much, you know, if they were including any design elements, um, you know, in that, uh, what their state, you know, stakeholder engagement process looked like. And, um, uh, you know, if the website redesign involves, uh, migration of any content that we have, um, you know, I think there's, you know, it could be followed up with, um, you know, an email with, with any of the, uh, proposals. Um, to me, when we're looking at VC Three, the thing that really stood out was the, uh, ability of the presenter to actually go into technical detail. Um, you know, when you look at integrations in a website, you know, we're a fairly small city. If you look at what Civic Plus was presenting, they're really pulling us into their universe. Um, and so they want you to use Civic Plus, you know, Civic Engage, you know, Civic branding. Um, if that's what is in the best interest of our city staff, obviously, I'm not gonna be doing the maintenance. Um, you know, I'm happy to consider it, um, you know, really defer to their judgment. Um, however, my concern, when you kind of get pulled into someone's universe, is it, it can kind of be a walled garden. And so you might not necessarily be able to go and get best-in-class for the particular solutions, such as your accounting software, payment processing, anything else like that. And as well as the Civic Press Plus, uh, presentation, when they talked about integrations, um, it, I, I would argue that it isn't true integration. Um, it's, uh, you're basically kind of finding a picture frame from, uh, you know, from an HTML standpoint and displaying another webpage and that. So it can kind of be hard to maintain consistent branding across the different websites. Um, Munich Code, I think, followed up, y- y- you know, as well, might, might have provided a different, some different options. My concern with Munich Code is it kind of seems like if we run into something later down the road where we might need to expand, um, you know, they were cheap on, they were, they were kind of the, the cheapest on one end, but then the most expensive on the other, and without knowing those details, um, especially when integrations are one of those things that can bump up the price tag. Um, you know, I'm concerned we might run into a situation where we do want to change something later down the road, and it, you know, it costs us an additional ten grand to do it. Um, anyway, so my recommendation personally, I think, would, would be that we consider VC Three. Um, the, the designs that they, you know, the websites that they have designed were fairly responsive. Um, uh, they were very well done. They were truly mobile design. Um, and, uh, there's that ability to integrate with other features, I think, will not lock us into a specific individual service when we might want to, you know, have a number of options on the table. So that is all I have to say for now. Thank you, Madam.
Councilman Perkins, uh, any other comments from the council? And to your point, Councilman, uh, Perkins, I, I did like the fact that they did do a refresh redesign within that, um, in terms of their pricing, and also they had a pretty good, in terms of their GUI, uh, what they, what they provided as well. So I thought that was pretty good as, as far as their, um, their proposal.
Yes. And it, and if I can add one more thing, uh, you know, again, uh, great, great work to our staff. Uh, it's very obvious I put a lot of work and reviewing all these, um, applications. I think any candidate could be a good solution for this city. Um, and so I think we really are, are choosing from some, some very good options here. So again, Mr. Gomez, and to the rest of the staff, we really appreciate the work you put in.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, um, I think, yes, go ahead, Vice Mayor Yasu.
Uh, thank you. Um, I think, uh, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Perkins. I felt actually that all three of the companies do provide similar services that I didn't see much difference. And, uh, when I look at the prices, yeah, Munich Code was the, the lowest, like you said, but, uh, in terms of the, the added, uh, servicing fee was a lot higher. Uh, the, the, so, um, so I think, um, I'm not sure, uh, which one was higher, whether V Three, VC Three, or Civic Engage?
Mr. Gomez? Mr. Gomez, which one was the higher price?
Hey, I'm pulling that up now. I don't remember off the top of my head.
And I guess, Count Vice Mayor Yasu, to your point, what was your concern about which?
My, my concern was if, uh, to my understanding, I'm not expert on website stuff, but if they do provide similar services, I would rather go with the, not Munich Code, but with the lowest from both VC Three or Civic Engage, since they, they seem like their set were the same to me, very similar, um, during the presentation.
Civic Engage had the highest pr- uh, price at twenty-nine thousand five hundred and five. VC Three was at twenty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine.
Thank you. So I would agree with you, Councilmember Perkins. I think we'll go with VC Three.
Comments or questions from the council? Hearing none? Yes. Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion.
A motion.
Councilman Perkins?
Um, I move that we recommend VC Three, uh, as the city website redesign firm.
I second that.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we recommend VC Three as the city's website redesign firm. Is there any discussion? Are you ready for a question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion pass. Okay, with that being said, we have, uh, the executive session, um, to, to recess. And so for the community that is watching, we are going to go into, uh, recess into executive session. So other than you seeing us say adjourn, uh, we, we look forward to seeing you at upcoming events and the, at the next work session. It's your pleasure. So at this time, council, I'll entertain a motion to recess this meeting and go into executive session for a legal matter.
Hi, Mayor. I moved out. We'll go to an executive session, uh, to discuss a legal matter.
And I second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we, uh, recess this meeting and go into executive session to discuss a legal matter. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We are recessing the meeting. Thank you.
Witching hour. I have my black cat.
I see it.
All of them, all of them. Oh, my gosh.
I.
I have.
Yeah, you have kept.
I have, I have three. My black one, my gray one, and my gray and white one. So.
We have quorum. So, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Councilwoman Hopkins?
Motion to adjourn, Madam Mayor.
Fifth second.
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you. Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 Say nay. Any abstentions? Meeting adjourned.
See you bye. Okay.
Bye-bye. Thank you.